Committee to Order. It's Wednesday, December 7th, and we are meeting in the Lauder Meeting Room at the Lunenburg Town Hall. In accordance with the requirements of the open-meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, as well as the public access Facebook page. You can join this meeting, if you wish, through the Zoom app, meeting ID number 85305757222. Also, this meeting will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. Our agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may, in fact, be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open-meeting law. I would like everyone, if they are able to stand, to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we turn to public comment, I just would like to state that the school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comment section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. Are there any public comments from the committee?
Madam Chair.
Certainly.
This evening, I'd like to just take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Genevieve Nass, who was a very longtime employee of our school department. But I think that her impact in Lunenburg went well beyond just but her physical education, teaching at the primary and elementary schools. I remember her, I must have been 10 or 11 years old, at St. Boniface Church with her daughters Elizabeth and Katie, dressed identically in the front row during Sunday morning mass. And later on, many of my friends were in her School of Dance. And then later on, my children were in her phys ed classes at the primary school. And I have many neighbors whose children learned to swim from Mrs. Nass and Ms. Nass and her daughters on Town Beach. I had a friend who commented on Facebook last week that she can't imagine that there were too many children that found their way, that grew up in Lunenburg over a period of four decades, that did not have some interaction or were affected in some way by Jen Nass. And it's a tribute to her and her family, and she will be missed.
Most definitely. My children also learned to swim at the Town Beach, and we will miss Jen. Thank you. Any other public comment from the committee? From the public?
Hi, Rhonda Lysia, 181 Reservoir Road. I attended a recent capital planning meeting to provide the thought process I relied on to conclude expansion of the resource officer program is a superior option to address safety than the district's capital requests. If the goal is to achieve the most immediate response time to an incident, the resource officer option prevails over the safety film. Unless the district substitutes the safety film with placing bars over first-floor glass on all buildings in order to delay entry long enough to eliminate the potential gaps in response time, the resource officer would outperform the capital items. If response time was the only consideration, I would be in favor of adding bars instead of safety film. This would be the more logical option. Relying solely on logic for issues involving children is not an approach that I recommend, which is why I chose the second-best option to reduce potential gaps in response time, which would be expanding the resource officer program. The option offered by the district's capital items represent the third-best option, if the goal is to reduce response time. I have heard references to a safety plan and the need to approve items as a package. I would like to know why the topic of safety has obviously been discussed at some length privately, but there has not been a single public forum on the topic. So why has the district chosen a plan which will cost taxpayers $500,000 in capital items and ranks third on the list as far as response time? I have been forthcoming in disclosing my thought process. Why hasn't the district, why has the district remained silent on its? I also noticed a social-emotional learning presentation is on the agenda this evening. Based on the sheer volume of discussion on this topic, in addition to behavioral and mental health issues of students, the district prioritizes SEL equal to, if not higher than achievement. The district has become authoritarian by not allowing families to opt out of SEL for philosophical or religious reasons. Apparently, it is acceptable to force families to forfeit the whole child in order to be eligible for public education in our town. How can the district claim supreme authority over the emotional well-being of children, claim emotional development and well-being are its top priority, and ignore these responsibilities when it comes to safety? It is baffling to me a member of the public would have to come forward to make the argument all of you should be making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lysia. Are there any other public comments this evening? All right, then. We will move on to the Chair's report. First, it is the 81st, I couldn't believe when I saw that, 81st anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. And I wish to thank any military member, active service, or veteran, and their families for their service to our country on this day. Last Thursday evening, it was great to see so many families attending the annual tree-lighting ceremony. Many thanks to Liz Peterson, Tom Alonso, Karen Wardwell and the band, the Lions Club, the Cub Scouts, and our public safety departments for a very successful event. And I also wanted to state that there will be no school committee meeting on December 21st. We packed our meeting this evening a bit, so that the week before the holiday, there would be no meeting. And I'd like to wish all our staff and families a wonderful holiday season. So next, we have our presentation for our SEL.
So, following our last meeting, I convened a meeting of our guidance counselors, who are currently teaching our SEL curriculum up through grade eight, and asked them if they would work with me to get a presentation pulled together for this meeting to provide you some insight as to what this looks like from the lens of student. So this evening, we have many members of the staff with us, and you will get to hear from them throughout the presentation. We have representatives from the schools who, if you have specific questions relative to a specific school, they should be able to answer those questions for you this evening. So I will turn it over now to Mrs. Scott.
Could I just ask for clarification, just so that I understand? Are we only going to hear about K through 8 tonight, or are we, is there a 9 through 12 component?
There is a 9 through 12. At the high school level, though, it's taught, we're looking to teach lessons through the advisory block. So rather than have many of your high school teachers here this evening, Mrs. Scott should be able to handle any of the questions that are specific to the high school.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hello. Okay. I just wanted to say hello. My name is Annika Scott. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning, and I have been working with the Trails to Wellness curriculum. And I wanted to introduce the other staff members who are going to join me with this presentation. So we have counselor from the primary school, Stephanie Miller, Enes Ward, who works at our primary school and Turkey Hill Elementary School, and then Catherine Antea and John Chulio, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, who are middle school guidance counselors. And they will be joining me. I'm going to share my screen. So again, this was asked to be presented kind of from the student lens, so you'll see we have included some student work here. And also, the counselors will explain how the schedule looks for a student and their Trails to Wellness curriculum, and then what some of the discussions and some of the work sound like. So again, Trails to Wellness is a multi-tier approach to evidence-based mental health support and social-emotional learning. It's rooted in cognitive behavioral theory principles, so what students think, how they feel, and what they can do. But it is meant to be taught by teachers and staff members at the school. It meets the CASL standards, which are endorsed by DESI. In fact, the Department of Ed asks schools to implement an SEL framework rooted in the CASL standards. And why SEL? The benefits of SEL are long-lasting. It's been shown to increase academic engagement, test scores, self-regulation, overall wellness, and decrease disruptive classroom behaviors. SEL can prevent the need for more intensive mental health support, and it is best delivered school-wide and even district-wide. So, we have introduced these Tier One lessons before, and Tier One means they're meant to be taught in a whole classroom, to a whole group of students, versus a smaller group, which would be Tier Two, in an intensive setting, which would be Tier Three. Posted on our website and linked here is a scope and sequence that we created. If you're interested in viewing, you can go to any of the school websites and see our SEL, Scope and Sequence, and you'll see that there are 20 lessons, starting with Introduction to Social-Emotional Learning. And they remain the same through every grade band, and the grade bands are K through 2, then 3 through 5, then 6 through 8, and finally 9 through 12. But this scope and sequence lays out, according to the curriculum, how something like, for example, dealing with conflict looks at the K through 2 level, what kinds of skills are we going to focus on regarding dealing with conflict for 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12, because it needs to be developmentally appropriate. Our counselors wanted also to add what they've been seeing from students this year. So at the high school, we've seen a significant number of students reporting symptoms of anxiety and depression. Other negative issues include negative peer interactions, lack of motivation to engage in academics, school avoidance, substance use, and limited mental health resources outside the school. At the middle school, we are seeing an increase in mental health needs of students manifesting in a variety of ways, including self-harm and thoughts of self-harm, behavioral challenges, emotional dysregulation, and family system breakdown. We've also seen the need for basic hygiene instruction, direct instruction or coping strategies, and executive functioning coaching. And we are intending to provide a safe place for us kids to share their thoughts and concerns. At elementary school, the counselors see students working on social skills, presenting the symptoms of trauma, coping with anxiety, and managing social and home stressors. And finally, at the primary, they're working with children experiencing anxiety, separation anxiety, difficulties with executive functioning and self-control, regulation, home stress, trauma histories, and difficulties with social and friendship skills. They work with many students who just need to check in, to share their feelings, and talk to counselors for a few minutes. So we wanted to provide some insight as to how this looks at, let me change my, there we go, at the first two grade bands, K 2 and 3 through 5. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie and Enes, because they work with those grade levels. And you can just let me know, ladies, when you're ready for the next slide.
Excellent. Thank you, Annika. So my name is Stephanie Miller. I am one of the two school adjustment counselors at the primary school, and I have a little bit of a cold, so I apologize if I'm a little hoarse. But thank you for having me, and I look forward to explaining a little bit about what SEL looks like at the primary school. And Annika, you're good to click. So at the primary school and Turkey Hill Elementary School, the SEL rotation, it follows the same rotation as all of the other specials. So each special will meet for 15 days at a time for 45 minutes, and then students will transition to the next special after the 15 days. So in total, at the end of the school year, each student will have 30 school days of SEL instruction, just as they would for any other special. So we're included in the same rotation as music, STEM, library, art, and physical education. So I wanted to include some examples of what some of the work looks like that I do with the students at the primary school. One of the main things that we do is we help students identify how they're feeling and how big that feeling is, so how intense it is. So students have the option to share if they'd like during lessons, but I do always give them the option to opt out. They're not obligated to share anything that they don't want to, but a lot of the little ones do end up wanting to share. On the left of the screen, I've also included a sample of an activity that we've done with the students. We have these two characters, Winston and Cleo. It's a cat and a dog. They talk about a situation that happened to them and how it made them feel, and we discuss it with a larger group. So this one, they were having some helpful and unhelpful thoughts, and the students practiced identifying what thought was helping them and what thought was not helping them, and how we can change those thoughts to be a little bit more helpful. You're good to click. Here are a couple other snippets from different lessons throughout the Trails curriculum. One of the ones that I've seen that has been most important for the younger students is working on friendship and social skills. So on the top, on the top left, we have a snippet of a lesson on how to introduce yourself and make a new friend, so just the basic steps in, you know, introducing yourself and engaging with your peers. On the top right, it's a sample from a lesson where we discuss what we can do if we're having a problem or having a conflict and we're feeling angry, so what strategies we can try and what coping skills they can access to manage that conflict successfully. And then on the bottom is one of the later lessons on respect. So it opens up a discussion for students to talk about how they can show respect to themselves and how they can show respect to other people. So those are some screenshots from the slides from the lessons that I do. And Annika, you're good to click. This is some lovely examples of some student work. I'll explain a little bit, because I know kindergarten artwork is not always self-explanatory. So on the top left, a student created sort of a positive thought monster. So they had a positive coping statement that the little creature was saying, and we talked about how these positive thought monsters can help us, whereas the unhelpful thought monsters, we don't want to have those, because they can make us feel a little icky. So that student designed their own. On the bottom, that was a kindergartner from last year, where they were differentiating between small problems and big problems. So a small problem would be, whoops, I dropped my pencil at school, and I can pick it up. And a big problem would be an emergency, if there was a fire or somebody needed help, that's some time you need to get an adult right away. And then lastly, on the right-hand side, some student work where they drew a picture of what strategies help them feel better when they're upset. So this kindergartner identified hugs and deep breaths as something that helps them. So those are some examples of just some student work at first, second, and kindergarten level. And Annika, you're good to click. I did ask some of the students, so I teach SEL in just kindergarten, and Ms. Ward teaches it in first and second grade. So on the whiteboard on the left, I went to a kindergarten classroom, and I asked students what they learned about an SEL. It's mostly, you know, I'm the feelings teacher, I'm the feelings lady, so it's, you know, feelings, words are feelings, we do movement, how to be kind, how to learn about empathy. I was really excited, they remembered that big word. So that was what the kindergartners identified as what they learn about. And then some of the upper grades, second grade, I'm going to read through these, because I know they're a little bit hard to see. So I asked the students what SEL class means to them and what they learned during SEL. So this student says it means we talk about feelings, emotions, it teaches me how to be a good friend. This student on the bottom, I enjoyed their response, it says, "It means a lot to me because I," and in parentheses, "I" means me, "really likes it. Whenever I have it, I have a lot of sad and mad feelings, so I pay close attention, and I have two brothers, so it's important." And then, Annika, you're good to click. And then the last two that I included, the student said in SEL, "We talk about feelings, we talk about what we are feeling, about what you can do with your feeling, and what your feelings are about." And the last student that I put up there says it's about being kind, teaching about what to do when you are in a fight, and what to do if you are sad, happy, or mad. So those are just some examples of things that we do at the primary. You're good to click. And I will turn it over to Ms. Ward, who can explain a little bit about the upper elementary.
Hi, my name is Enes Ward, and I look at both the primary in grades 1 and 2, and then also at Turkey Hill in grades 3 through 5. So this poster, I also asked the students kind of what SEL means to them. This was just at the upper elementary, 3 through 5. And I know it's a little difficult to read, but some of the main takeaways that I saw, a lot of the students had some similar answers. I noticed that a lot of students said that in SEL, we learn how to take care of our feelings. So if we're having a strong emotion, SEL helps us find ways to calm down. One of the other main takeaways I saw was that SEL helps us to be kind to one another. And then SEL helps us, just gives us a space to talk about our feelings. And again, like Ms. Miller said, they don't have to share their feelings if they don't want to, just if they feel like sharing, they can. You can go to the next slide. So I also did some examples of lessons that we do. This was our lesson on unhelpful thoughts. At the upper elementary level, we use the analogy of ants at a picnic. So if you have a lot of ants at your picnic, it would be uncomfortable, maybe make you a little upset, and the same with having unhelpful thoughts. It might make you feel sad or upset. So that's kind of how we give them the idea or the analogy of having unhelpful thoughts. You can go to the next slide. So, we talk about what we can do when we have an unhelpful thought, and we talk about how there's three steps that you can take. So first, just catching the thought, notice that you're having an unhelpful thought, and then the next step is to check your thought, so asking yourself questions about the thought. Some of the questions that we talk about is, what's another way to look at it? What would you tell a close friend if they were thinking or saying that to themselves? What evidence supports or doesn't support your thought? And if the thought is true, what skills can you use to cope with it? The last part is, we try to think of a new thought, so change that unhelpful thought to make that thought more helpful and think of a better way to look at the situation. Similar to Stephanie's lessons, we'll talk about the "I can't monster." So instead of saying, "I can't do this," it's "I can't do this yet, something I'm still working on." So you can go to the next slide. This is an example of a worksheet that we did for unhelpful thoughts. So I asked the students to think of a time that they had a thought that wasn't very helpful, think about how it made them feel, draw a little picture. This student talked about a time that they were afraid to mess up while they were singing at a performance. And then their new thought was, "It's okay if I mess up. If they laugh at me, that's their opinion, I think I'm good, and I'll just keep on practicing." And so I like how they notice how the different thought changes how they feel, and that's what we want them to realize. The other thought was about a friend not wanting to play with them, thinking that they didn't tell them. And then the new thought was, "She might have just forgotten, or maybe she wanted to play with someone new that day." And then the last thing we talk about with thoughts is how helpful thoughts can create a positive mood and comfort us when we're sad, worried, or angry. And one thing we talk about is that one helpful thought that we can always give ourselves is to think of something that we're thankful for. So in first grade, I had them draw pictures of things that they're thankful for. And then the other helpful thought that you can give yourself is to think of a place that makes you feel calm and happy when you're there. So we all drew our calm place. So some friends drew a picture of their bedroom or a spot in their house that makes them feel calm, maybe a spot outside in the yard. Some friends drew the beach, so just giving ourselves positive thoughts. You can go to the next slide. Another lesson that I included was the self-care lesson. We talked about how there is three different categories that you can think about when thinking of how to take care of yourself. So we talked about our mind, so this is taking care of your thoughts and managing strong feelings. So if you do have an unhelpful thought or a strong feeling, things that you can do to take care of yourself. So this student wrote that they like to draw in a journal, and this could also be reading a book or something like that. The second way that you can take care of yourself, we talked about your physical body. So this is exercise and taking a shower, eating a balanced diet, healthy foods. This student wrote, "Go to bed sooner." And then the last thing that we talked about is your heart, and so that means doing things that help you feel good and connected to other people. So this is basically spending time with your friends and your family. And so this person wrote, "Spend more time with the people that I love." And I think that's it for our lessons. I think, I don't think there's another slide.
So John and Catherine, if you want to start in on how it looks in grades 6 through 8, since that grade band is separated?
Okay, so I'm Catherine Antea, and I'm one of the guidance counselors at the middle school. In the middle school, our guidance class runs, just like it does in the primary and the elementary, where it runs through the same rotations as all the other specials. So we see, either John or myself, we split it, and we see the kids in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade for one rotation. The grades are a little bit different, so some we see like for a little bit longer than others, but it's about six weeks is each rotation. So our class that we run is, we do follow the Trails to Wellness. Our main focus that we've been working on is just teaching students to be kind to themselves and others. I did talk to my class a little bit about what they felt like guidance class was to them, and they talked about learning self-discipline, executive functioning skills, and we also introduce them to college and career options, and work on a variety of social and emotional skills needed to be successful in life. Along with this Trails to Wellness curriculum, we add in games and other engaging learning activities to try to motivate students about the curriculum topics. And we do always give students the opportunity to step out if a topic makes them feel uncomfortable, but none of our students have chosen to do that as of now. Our lessons are, as you saw earlier, they are similar to that of the younger kids, where it's just building to an age-appropriate lesson of the same topic. So we also have the unhelpful thoughts. Ours, we do more of a discussion in how it could apply to both school and home, in different areas of life. We also do a lot with the different grades, because they've already seen these lessons. We do a lot of supplementing. In 8th grade, for example, we talk about their different options for high school and what the difference is between a tech school versus a public school or a private school, and go over some of those options. So we really do look at the whole picture. We also go over, like, and look at academics with them, and help them see like which areas might be tough for them, what they need to work harder on, talk about the different options for getting extra help. So we kind of... So we kind of expand on that topic of emotions to how now it's applying to everything else around them and in life. And also on top of that, we are seeing a lot of kids, especially since COVID. And John is going to go over a little bit the numbers of students that we're seeing in kind of the tier one, two, and three.
Yeah, hi guys, I'm John, the seventh and eighth grade guidance counselor. It's nice to meet you all, and I'm glad to speak today to you. But yeah, we just wanted to give you some data on elsewhere, like our school adjustment counselor and our guidance counselor, what we do on a day-to-day basis, a weekly basis, and a monthly basis. But just in fall 2022 data, so for tier three students, our adjustment counselor, specifically at our school, she sees 28 total students weekly for counseling services on their IETs. So just a, is a definitely a huge need for her. So she's definitely seeing kids on a regular basis there. Again, that 28 students, she completes direct instruction on topics such as self-awareness, self-control, self-advocacy, social skills in group and individually, executive functioning strategies, and more. She then consults when she speaks with those students on the strategy she uses. She consults with the teachers about the strategies they can use inside the classroom. So just not, not only do we use this, strictly use this Trails to Wellness, we're going over beyond to try to help these kids function in school and in class and outside of school. So then for tier two students, our adjustment counselor and me and Catherine, we have, there's two weekly tier two groups running currently right now. The groups range from executive functioning skills focusing on how to stay organized, planning, et cetera, to coping strategies for students. And we also do this in the classroom with our Trails to Wellness. We do heavy focus on executive functioning skills, making sure our kids are organized, staying on topic of their schoolwork, and providing them time to complete school. And then for our guidance counselors, me and Catherine, weekly, along with our classes, we see 24 students for check-ins, again, weekly. And then tier one, our guidance counselors, for me and Catherine, like Catherine said, we teach sixth, seventh, and eighth for our Trails to Wellness classes. And again, like that rotates those six specials throughout the year. So a group of kids gets it once, one time a year. And then for, for also for me and Catherine, just a little bit into what we do on a day-to-day basis as well, we do morning and lunch duties. We see kids for all drop-ins throughout the day. We have Monty Tech applications, 504 team members, and we consult with teachers and staff along with so much more, just along with this utilizing this Trails to Wellness curriculum that I believe is super effective and just, obviously, there's so much more we could use, but I think it covers a great basis on what we need to do with the student to teach them that they need to be mindful of how they act, their behaviors, and just on a day-to-day basis on what, just being a nice person throughout their life. And then too, this is just a little self-care thing that we utilize from the Trails to Wellness, little Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And we do, we have these students fill this out. Of course, again, students may not want to fill it out, we just encourage them to. And it just kind of self-explanatory, kind of the self-esteem and feelings, like your best self. The question that it asks is, what do I need to feel good about myself and happy with my life? So we have those kids, students fill that in. We have love and belonging. The question that I ask is, what do I need to feel cared for and connected to others? The physical needs on the bottom of the pyramid is physical needs and safety. What does my body need to stay healthy? We just discuss that as a whole as a classroom, students can share. They don't have to share, but if they do, we encourage it.
Thank you. And then moving into the high school, our plan is to have Trails lessons begin. We piloted with some advisory classrooms last year. And then this year, we would like all advisories to experience the Trails lessons. We're going to start with five throughout the course of the remainder of the year. So here are a couple of samples. And one example would be the mindfulness lesson. Might feature, it does feature something like this, what is mindfulness, explaining that to the student. And then Trails doesn't only provide, you know, slides for the students to explain certain concepts like mindfulness, but they also include activities. So for example, a teacher might be able to use this paper folding activity where they're asking students to kind of close their eyes and focus, and they're giving them instructions with folding the paper, just something to, you know, relax them and have them focus. There's a mindful breathing activity. Trails incorporates at the older grades a feelings wheel to help students to be able to articulate their feelings more specifically. So a teacher might use something like that. Another lesson that we plan to do at the high school is the empathy lesson. So for example, in that lesson, students will identify who their supports are. So in their outer circle, do they have trustworthy neighbors or community supports, including teachers, coaches, and friends? Do they have a middle circle, which is friends and extended family? And who are their inner circle, close and highly trusted friends and family members? So they can identify. Again, if you want to view the 20 lessons vertically through each grade band, they are posted, the scope and sequence for Trails is posted on our website. And as the counselors described in each of the classes, they are, they are supplementing and working with the whole child.
Thank you. Is there any committee member that has a question? Mr. Schoolenbrini?
So Ms. Scott, I, I was, I did a little bit of a research dive on the empirical studies regarding the benefits of SEL. And some of them, one of them in particular was a longitudinal meta-analysis with over 250,000 kids, and it showed an 11 percentage point gain in a student achievement when SEL is implemented. So I guess my question for you is twofold. First, are there similar gains seen in Lunenburg? And second, what sort of data tracking do we have in terms of measuring those gains?
That's a good question. So this is a little bit twofold too. We, we just started working with Trails last year. We do have some data in terms of, like the middle school guidance counselors were talking about in terms of drop-in visits to, to guidance or to our adjustment counselors. But I also want to point out that, you know, the use of this Trails curriculum for a small, you know, portion of their special area time is only one piece of social-emotional learning in school. We've been working with teachers for years on social-emotional learning and, and asking them to implement tenets of social-emotional learning into their academic classes because we know that students, you know, they, they can't learn as well if they don't feel safe and comfortable in school. And so we're, we're trying to help them through this. So I guess my answer is, I don't have, I, I have data not in front of me right now that I could give you on, on student visits. I know we, we definitely had a tough couple of years here too, following the pandemic. We could certainly, we are tracking, you know, visits to our counselors, but I guess I don't have the data that circles right back to Trails just yet because again, it's more of a comprehensive picture than just, this is just one thing, that one piece of what we provide in the student's education.
Another data point that was shared with me from the administrators at the Turkey Hill is that they're noticing a good reduction in the referrals to the office.
That's.
Because the kids have skills to navigate the conflict and manage their thoughts and behavior appropriately. So that's another data point that we're seeing. So if the kids aren't being referred to the office, they're still in class, which is a good thing.
That is a good thing.
And we were explaining too, beyond, you know, everything from, from knowing that people in class with you have other perspectives and you both can, you can have different perspectives, but you still need to be able to work on a math problem together, or you need to be able to stand in line at the cafeteria. And if you're feeling upset that day, we want to give our students the tools to be able to cope with those upset feelings and not act out about them. And then if you're sitting and learning in the classroom, of course, you're, you're more ready to learn if you're not struggling with, with some of your thoughts and feelings.
Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. I have a few comments and some questions too. Want to thank you. Hopefully, we can share this too and post it on the website and email it even home to parents too. I think it was a great presentation. I do agree, I think data is going to be really important, looking at data. Whether it could potentially lighten the load for guidance counselors, does it reduce the visits? Or does it increase the visits because now students have that connection and want to visit? I think either way, that'll be interesting. Could it also, again, reduce the disruptive behaviors? Potentially even reduce the needs for educational plans, 504s? I'd be curious about following the data there too. One question I had, which I think comes up with parents, is implementing this program, does it take away from math or reading time in the classroom?
I would say no.
It hasn't taken away from the academic minutes because at grades K through eight, we're implementing the particular curriculum of Trails through the guidance and SEL classes. However, again, we want to reinforce that we, we expect teachers to implement social-emotional learning in their academic classes as well. But no, the Trails curriculum does not take away from academics. And when we start at the high school, it, it won't. Either because we're already running advisories, and the longer advisories are on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we plan to use Thursdays. We're going to split up the, the grade levels and kind of when the Trails lessons occur, but they'll be on Thursdays monthly.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Another question I had was, you talked about kind of the future. That would be great to hear about, like what, what the plans are for the future, whether this actually is no longer an elective and does it get integrated in the classrooms? But I think it's kind of a wait and see. And then my other question was, have, have parents, or how many parents have reached out with concerns about the curriculum in their child?
We have had a handful of parents reach out. I don't have the exact numbers, and I think we've responded to those concerns, whether it be the principal speaks with the, the parent. We've had some family meetings. We're, we're happy to meet with families about their concerns. I don't know if Dr. Burnham has, has further insight on this. I know that I've been included in a few of the, the responses and meetings myself.
It's been pretty limited. I, I think we, not myself directly, but we had inquiry from, I think, three parents relative to the opt-out possibility. And as Mrs. Scott indicated, we, we had a meeting with one family where the principals were present. Ms. Miller, who teaches the curriculum, was present. I was present, Mrs. Scott was present. We just wanted to hear their concerns relative to the content of the curriculum. And in that particular case, there was nothing specific in the curriculum that caused the concern. They just wanted to opt out, you know, again, with the notion that my child would have more time on academics, but that's not how that works. When we put in the SEL as part of the specials rotation, essentially, you know, you, you go from a five-day rotation with five different specials to a six-day rotation with six different specials. So if we didn't have the SEL curriculum as a special in the rotation, we'd be back to a five-day rotation of specials. So it really does not pull any time from the academic, the, the core instruction portion of the day.
Thank you. And the last thing was just a comment. I think this is a great avenue to increase safety in schools, increasing the coping mechanisms for students, but also the mindfulness of the other students as well, kind of getting everybody. And I think it's just another increase in safety of schools where it doesn't necessarily have to be a resource officer.
Go ahead. This is just a real quick question, Dr. Burnham. Ms. Scott, have any of the kids ever said anything? I mean, I know that there was a reference in the presentation of primary school. I know that the parents have objected, but have any of the kids objected? Like contemporaneous objections, like, I don't want to do this.
So I think, you know, we, we have the folks here who, who teach the kids this content and interface with them on a daily basis. So if any of you have heard directly from students that they don't want to, I think you had sort of alluded to the fact that you allow them to step out of a particular lesson if it's anxiety-producing or they're feeling very uncomfortable. Has that happened for any of you in your classrooms? So you're not hearing any objection from the students?
Dr. Burnham, yes, specifically for our middle school kids. I just want to speak out loud, just, yeah, we've had no objections. And we also, again, piloted this last year for our kids. And throughout my whole experience with the sixth grade class I taught, we had no objections from any students in regards to the topics we discussed because again, it was discussed in plainly, plain manner. If students didn't want to share, they didn't have to share. If students wanted to share, they could share. And not, one kid, I believe, again, one kid, not one kid from last year till now has objected to step out of a class due to a conversation with a topic in the middle school specifically.
And I can just speak to the primary school that we haven't had any students want to step out. We have had some students who do either want to share about how they're feeling or share about a situation or not share. And if they don't want to share, that's perfectly fine. So it's usually just opting out of, you know, sharing about how they're feeling in class, but we haven't had any students reject the whole class.
I also just wanted to quickly point out, and I can link it to the presentation that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed on their instructional support page, where they have links to all the content area frameworks, also has a link to the social-emotional learning recommendations. And you can see that they, they explain why social-emotional learning is important. And then they have links to the castle standards and some of the components that we talked about tonight with Trails.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beardmore?
Thank you. I have several questions and, and comments, and they're all over the place, so bear with me. They're not super well organized. First of all, as, as Mr. Leighton said, thank you very much for taking the time to do this. I think you were very thoughtful in the way that you brought this out and gave us pretty much the right amount of content relative to all of our attention spans and ability to comprehend this stuff in, in, in bite-sized chunks. As I'm sure you're aware, we have received some comments from parents, both in written form, public comment here at our meetings. I, at least, I don't, can't speak for the other members, have had individual conversations with some parents who have expressed some concerns about this curriculum. I, I've been on the record that, that I generally support these concepts, and I think that this is time and money well spent at this point in our, in our community and in our culture. And I'll reserve some additional comments for that in, in a few minutes. But there have been, I, I just want to, you know, kind of take some of the criticisms that I've heard head-on and, and ask for your opinions. Because I, I'm curious, as the people who are out there dealing, you know, working with the kids and, and engaging them, but you're all professional adults and, and very learned in your, in your field, do you view yourselves as, in any way, shape, or form, replacing the role of parents in discussing these topics with students?
Yeah, so I would just, of course, I think for generalized for my class and what I teach, I, I never step in, in front of a parent's opinions in point view. I, I make it clear to students in my class that every single person walking in, walking out is, they have their rights or their own opinion. And I, I say that out loud, when, especially when I say a statement to the class, like an opinion of mine. I make sure, I let them know it's an opinion. You guys can disagree with me, and I would love to have that conversation. But I, I make sure their opinion is heard. My opinion is, again, my opinion, and they know that. I'm not trying to replace any thought, feelings, religious belief, whatever, whatever X, Y, and Z. I would, I would never. I would never try to replace a parent's perspective on that child. I just want to, again, make middle school a better place for the kids. I want to provide the kids with, again, opportunity to come see me and speak to me about an issue that's going on with their friends, family. And it's a great opportunity to do that. And I think students have expressed that. And I think, again, like we say, the increase in weekly visits, I think it shows that what the guidance counselors in the middle school and elementary and primary, the work we do and how important it is because kids want to come to us and talk to us. And again, we hear their perspectives, we take their perspectives for granted, and that's what we go with. And we're not going to change that. We're going to give our point of view, and we hear their point of view, and we go from there. But we would never try to change or replace, like, be a parent for the kid. We want to be a role model and just do whatever we can to kind of improve their lives for better and just be, again, a person they look back on and say, I enjoyed seeing them, talking to them, and just being with that counselor I had.
One of the terms that has come up and been stated in our meetings in a couple of different ways has been the word indoctrination. And I'm not really sure what that means. There was a reference that was made by a committee member and then by a parent that was commenting relative to the committee member's comments about folks in the media who've latched on to SEL. And, you know, and these are my words, you know, in some media outlets, SEL has become the outrage of the month. And there's been a spotlight shown, a negative spotlight shown on SEL. And the word indoctrination is continuously used in that regard. And I think I'm bringing it up, not to put words in anybody's mouth, but just because I've heard the word repeatedly. And so, again, not being able to put a clear definition on it from my own perspective because I'm not sure what we're indoctrinating, I'm curious if anybody has any thoughts on that or what, in your professional opinion, and everybody on this panel is a guidance counselor or a school adjustment counselor or has training in these fields, could you comment on perhaps the guardrails that you use to be sure that you're not overstepping your bounds when it comes to indoctrinating around political topics or religious topics or those kinds of things?
Kind of echoing what John was saying, I think that we follow exactly what you would see if you looked at the curriculum. So we're teaching those specific skills, and you have access to all of those skills. And nothing would be opinion-based, and especially in a classroom setting. If a student is sharing something, we wouldn't necessarily give our opinion on it. And there really isn't, like, room in the classroom setting for kids, for us to be giving specific opinions on certain religious or political beliefs. As far as we go with anything on that is just simply that there are different beliefs. And to accept that there are different beliefs, nothing more than really just that sentiment, just there are different perspectives in our world, and we have to accept those different perspectives. And I saw Stephanie unmute, so.
I was just going to echo what you said as well, Enes. For our lessons at the primary school, specifically focusing on empathy and diversity, which kind of go hand in hand, we teach them back-to-back. You know, the main tenet of what I teach to the students at the kindergarten level is that you will be interacting with people that come from different places, that celebrate different holidays, that speak from different languages, that might look similar or different than you. And just the main message that I give to them is that, you know, I'm not giving you a perspective, but I'm just saying that there are differences and similarities between students. And at the end of the day, we need to be kind and care about each other. So it's not a, excuse me, specific perspective that I'm giving. It's more just helping the students be empathetic and understanding of the differences amongst the student body.
Thank you. I want to focus for just a few minutes on the high school program. And I understand that the high school program is a bit more nascent than the other programs. But I have to tell you, I have some concerns because unlike the other grade levels that are being facilitated and taught by professionals with a background in psychology and those types of disciplines, rank-and-file faculty in the high school are being charged with facilitating these discussions with a much, by definition, a much more sophisticated and savvy audience. And so I have concerns about the qualifications of our teachers in facilitating these discussions in this curriculum at the high school. And I'm wondering if anybody could, you know, particularly, like, the topic of mindfulness comes immediately to mind. I'm close with some folks who are experts in that topic, and they're very defensive about the topic of mindfulness and that it shouldn't be taught by people who are not trained in mindfulness. And yet, that's more or less what we appear to be doing. So I'm wondering if somebody could comment on that.
Sure, I can comment on that. We actually discussed that specific thing at our recent high school meeting. Though we are, we did choose to have the guidance counseling staff teach the Trails curriculum in K through eight, it is meant to be delivered by any teacher. And if I were to pull up a lesson plan, for example, for mindfulness, it would, all of the lesson plans are scripted for the teacher if they choose to follow the script. And we're asking them to at least read through the script. I mean, we don't want it to sound robotic to students, but all the lessons include, for example, a portion that says, "say." I think Stephanie had a clip with the Winston and Cleo, like what she exactly should say. And yes, we do realize that not everybody is an expert in something like mindfulness. And I think we encourage the teachers to say to the students if they're not, you know, you could even say, "I'm learning about this with you. Let's try some of these mindfulness activities." They're going to be delivered at a basic level. We're also offering to our high school staff, for anyone who chooses, to have somebody else come in and co-teach with them during advisory. So one of our high school guidance staff members, for example, or one of our adjustment counselors at the high school, if a particular teacher is feeling uncomfortable. But again, the lessons are meant to be delivered by any staff member. They don't get into that tier-two deeper level, they're at the tier-one level.
So it's my understanding that, you know, a lot has been done to try to help facilitate this at the high school, to including, you know, I think there have even been some work around prep time and training and coaching and those kinds of things. Is there a plan to measure the opinions of our staff and students, particularly at the high school, relative to their comfort level with teaching this? Do they perceive that it is being received in a serious manner and not being looked upon as frivolous? Are they actually taking the time that they need to learn the subject matter and deliver it in a way that's credible? And I understand that at this stage, that might be very hard to do or measure or compare. But I'm very, I'm very concerned about the high school in particular. Because I was a high school student once, and, you know, different high school teachers have different attitudes and ways of coming at things and areas of expertise. And I had teachers that I think would have been really great delivering this curriculum and other teachers that were more or less knuckle-draggers that would not have taken it seriously. And that's no indictment on our staff, it's just the way it is. There are certain people that are good with this stuff and certain people like myself that wouldn't be. And I'm just wondering, are we doing the work that we need to do to make sure that we're doing this right over the long term?
I would jump in here. We did have advisory teachers volunteer to pilot this last year. And we did take their input as to their comfort level around delivering these lessons and what their thoughts were on, you know, going forward with this as part of the advisory curriculum. There are, I want to point out that there are 20 lessons in the grade span, 912. So we have those students for four years. So we're talking right now about each year, the advisory teachers getting comfortable and learning five lessons. So folks are available to them to dig in and make sure that they feel ready to teach the lessons. And the lessons, as they're outlined and scripted, could be as brief as 10 to 15 minutes. So I would say that, I'm going to offer my opinion. Good teachers navigate kiddos and how they're feeling and how they're doing and how they're responding to whatever they're going through any given day of the week, whether they're teaching science, math, PhysEd, or a 15-minute SEL lesson. The whole intention initially of implementing an advisory block was so that every adult there in the building, all the professional staff, including administrators, the nurses, everybody was in the mix to take on an advisory, so that the advisory would be a small group of kids. That small group of kids that would stay with you and build that relationship and connection for the duration of your time in high school. This is new. It's, in my opinion, it's not an unusual response when teachers are asked to do something new. They express their worry and their concern, and I'm not comfortable and I'm not sure I'm equipped to do this. With time and some coaching and support and processing, I think what they will find is, okay, I was really worried about not a whole lot. And as Mrs. Scott has said, we will provide the co-teaching support, which for some teachers is really going to be more of a modeling, right? Somebody else will go in and take the lead on teaching. And then they feel like, oh, okay. But it can be, for some, anxiety-provoking because they're not yet fully familiar with the curriculum, and they're not yet sure what to anticipate that kids are going to say. But I have to say, in the world that we live in, there are any number of teachers in any number of content areas at the high school who are going to have to navigate conversations any day of the week based on what is going on in the world around us, right? And we have provided, last year, a workshop, particularly for the upper grades, around how to navigate those challenging conversations. Because our role as educators, as was, you know, alluded to already, is not to provide the opinion and tell children what to think. It's about helping to navigate the conversation in a way that is appropriate, that we're hearing all opinions, that we're not making judgment, et cetera. So we, teachers have to navigate the unexpected in a classroom, every day, any given day. So while I understand the teachers feeling like, you know, I'm not sure I'm ready to do this, I feel very confident that the vast majority of them really could do a very fine job doing this, again, because it's scripted. As far as us bringing in additional guidance staff with our SR monies, our teachers went through an awful lot during the COVID years, trying to learn new methods of instruction, new technologies, new online resources, navigating, you know, how to keep my momentum of my class going when this student is out for the next 10 days, and that student's, they've been through a lot. And we knew that we were going to be moving on a new curriculum in math and ELA at the K-5 level. To add one more new curriculum onto their plate didn't make any sense.
I fully agree with that.
So that is why we have guidance counselors doing it in the pull-out model. And they are also available during the day when they're not teaching a classroom of children in their SEL classes to support in other ways the needs of families and students in the behavioral health realm. But we did not hire them because we felt we needed to have highly-trained individuals to deliver this fundamental curriculum.
So thank you very much for your comments. I think it's very important that we air this out and we have this conversation and people are aware of some of these concerns and that we keep this dialogue open.
Mm-hmm, yep.
As we would learn if we were sitting in an SEL classroom, perhaps. I don't want to belabor the point. I did say I would, you know, kind of come back to why I think this is ultimately a good idea. And I obviously hear the concerns that have been voiced to me, and I respect them, and I don't want to dismiss them in any way, shape, or form. I think that they're, they are the concerns of members of our community and parents, and we need to consider them. I view this through a couple of different lenses. The first is just my own. I'm 50 years old, and to this day, I have difficulty managing my own emotions. I think I can say that. And I think that Mrs. Arshinbo and Dr. Burnham will attest to that. These are lessons that are valuable to anybody at any age, but can particularly be valuable to students who may be getting these lessons plenty at home, but it can only reinforce. But for those who are not getting them, boy, is this important. And we have a ton of data right now that shows that as a society, we have a mental health problem, particularly amongst our kids. The effects of mobile devices and electronics and not being able to turn off and all those things, plus the pandemic, are really weighing on our kids. And the ability for our kids to learn how to understand their emotions and interrelate with others relative to these issues and to help each other as a community, I just think today, in December of 2022, is as important as many of the academic topics that we're covering right now. And again, I always say I'll keep an open mind, and I will, but I think that we're doing extraordinarily important work here. And until somebody convinces me otherwise, that's kind of where I stand. But I do think that we, like every other part of our school system, we need to strive for continuous improvement, and I think we need to do it here, too.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. We haven't heard from Mrs. Kelly. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Mrs. Kelly? I can't see you, but.
(laughing) Yeah, you know, I did want to say, we obviously, we do acknowledge the fact that we have heard some parents. I don't want to say frustration, concerns about SEL, but I don't, like, speak for myself. I certainly am not 100% on parenting every day, day in and day out. Any supplemental help we can get, I think is wonderful because I know my kids have come home, and they're in the younger end, but they talk about their feelings and how they're supposed to handle them. And I think that's just so great because it is something. but they talk about their feelings and how they're supposed to handle them. And I think that's just so great, because it is something that's important to teach kids nowadays, because, you know, their little worlds were turned around for a little bit. And to be able to let them know that it is okay to, you know, it's valid to have these feelings of being upset. It's valid to be upset to be a parent playing with someone else in the playground, didn't play with you. But how do you appropriately handle that? Because it will prepare them for, you know, later on in life, and, and how to appropriately manage their emotions and their feelings. So I think it's great work. I really appreciate all that you do. You guys have certainly an extensive curriculum in this, and I just, I really appreciate the work you've been doing.
Thank you. Just for myself, my, my comments would be, I'm very glad to hear that the high school teachers do have that kind of support in putting this curriculum to use, because sometimes you do need a little extra support. I was asked to teach something once that I didn't think I was qualified to do. And I was given that kind of support, and it made the world of difference. So I'm very glad to hear that. And I would agree with the rest of the board and say, this is very important work, and I thank you very much. Anything else?
Just one, one last
Just one? Okay.
Very quick. I feel like I'm saying one last question for our witness, but Dr. Burnham, or anybody on the, the TV, I had talked to somebody at one of the PTA meetings who was a parent in Lunenburg and a, a teacher in another school district doing this work. And one of the things that she had sort of made me aware of was the fact that if we didn't have this as part of the curriculum, or if we did this in a way that was different, that in addition to impacting the students, it might impact retention and, and attracting new talent in the teaching pool. In the same way that if you were, you know, like, a, a, a big law firm and you had, like, typewriters instead of computers, like, you're gonna have a hard time competing. Is that something that you guys think of when you're talking about implementing new kinds of curriculum and things like this? Or is this just, you know, sort of in the ether?
Well, I think it's important for us to stay current and forward-facing, to continue to improve the district and move forward. I can tell you, in my earliest years here in the district, and a few other administrators who were new to the district, and even some folks who taught elsewhere and came to the district, all recognized that our curriculum and instructional practices, just in general, not the SEL piece, were lagging behind. So we're doing a lot of work around curriculum and modernizing instructional practice. And I, I do think that that will be important. But we also, when we're hiring new staff, we look to those who have something to add to the staff in terms of their experience. So yeah, we have, we have some work to do, and, and we're, we're doing it.
Okay, thank you. If there isn't anything else for our SEL presentation, I want to thank the presenters very much for their time this evening and, and for their flexibility in answering our questions and have great holidays.
Thank you all. You don't have to stay on the meeting.
Thank you.
You can stop.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Next on our agenda, we have review and approve minutes. We have regular meeting minutes from August 31st and from the 7th of September.
I was not present on the 7th of September, so I will need to abstain from that.
Okay. Are there any concerns with either set of those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 31st minutes.
I'll second.
And we would need a roll call vote, because Mrs. Kelly is virtual this evening.
So we'll start with Mrs. Kelly. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 7th meeting minutes.
A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And a roll call vote?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Abstain.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
All right, so we're all set in the minutes department. Now, review and approve a line item transfer, Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, business manager. In front of the school committee tonight is a transfer from the, the primary school. It's a building-based transfer. Moving, the, the total amount is $14,287. Money is coming from a workbook, a line item of $13,800. Eight, yep. And that is a surplus. That was a, a workbook set we're going to support the new curriculum, which was we were able to buy that with grant money. So that's why there's a surplus there. Repair of music equipment for 230. It's a line item that they don't need this school year. And they're proposing moving $257, which is actually the line item balance for that account. So the, they're proposing moving the money into new furniture and equipment. And the equipment that they're proposing to buy is new walkie-talkies for each teacher in the school. In addition, they'll be looking at replacing a, a broken chair, a staff chair. Secondly, they're, they're moving $800 into the special education instructional materials. That is earmarked, it's identified as PT, but it's actually pre-K, uh, PK, and achieved classrooms. And then finally, the balance of that transfer is going into the general supply account, which will support the new curriculum. So those are special supplies, crayons, rulers, any other classroom materials that they may need. It's not going to the curriculum itself, the, the purchase of the curriculum. It's supportive supplies. So that is in front of the, the committee tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve this transfer?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
And a second?
Second.
And then a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a little bit of an update on our efforts to move toward a hybrid school committee meeting located out of the high school. We did order and have received all of the equipment that we were looking to test out a setup in order to hold hybrid school committee meetings from the middle high school. I will be working with PAC and the Towns Network Administrator to test the setup to be sure that it functions the way we need it to in order to conduct a hybrid meeting, particularly with clear audio. Additionally, the equipment will allow us to broadcast live to PAC's education channel from the middle high school. We will hope to be testing this equipment in the next couple of weeks. Of course, that's pending the availability of the network administrator and the folks at PAC. And as soon as I can test that out, I'll get back to you. I hope to have an update for you at the January 4th meeting on that. An update on the equity audit, the equity process, the consultants doing this audit for us. They have completed surveys, interviews, and focus groups. And now they are compiling all of their information into a report. They have indicated that they hope to have a draft report by the end of December. So hopefully, I'll have something to bring forward to the committee in January. An update on the Family School Partnership Initiative program. Our district team attended the program's kickoff meeting on November 17th. At that meeting, we were provided an overview of the program for all of the participating districts. Our team at that meeting had a chance to meet with the facilitators that we will be working with throughout this program this year. We attended our first facilitated team meeting earlier this week on Monday. At that meeting, we worked with our facilitators and began reflecting upon what we're currently doing within the framework of the Family School Partnership Fundamentals. There are five of them, so more information will, will come on those at a later time. But we focused at that particular meeting on building positive relationships and promoting family well-being. Yesterday, our facilitators held a staff focus group and two student focus groups involving students from grades four through 11. There are two small family focus groups scheduled for next week. Our next meeting will be an independent team meeting, so our district team will meet without the facilitators. They've given us direction as to what we need to accomplish in our independent meeting. And that is to continue to reflect on the district's family partnership strengths, gaps, and opportunities in the context of those five fundamentals. I have a few December reminders. Tomorrow evening, at the high school, there's a performance of Alice in Wonderland. That's at 6:30 PM. Reminder to everyone that our secretaries are currently running our annual gift card drive. And the drive ends this Friday, although I did see that Mr. Adams did say to the parents down at the primary school that they would accept things through Tuesday, but really, we're trying to put a wrap on this by the end of the week. We know that things will continue to come in after that. Monday, the 12th, we have a PTO meeting at 7:00 over at the middle high school. And the 13th, we hope our concert, our high school concert, will be well-attended. And on the 15th is the middle school concert. And just a reminder for everyone that schools will be closed December 24th through Monday, January 2nd for the winter break. Schools reopen Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. And on that note, I would just like to wish all the members of our community happy holidays.
Thank you very much, Dr. Burnham. Do we have a student representative this evening?
I do not see one in attendance.
All right. Then we will go on to new business, and we have a discussion on identified needs and our five-year staffing program.
Mr. Cassidy, do you want a screen share, or would you prefer that I do?
I can just
So we engage in this exercise annually in the fall and have for the last three years, I think. We started to engage in this process at the request of the town manager. She was looking to use some information and incorporate it into her five-year financial forecast for the town. So we revise our five-year plan every year. So what you have before you this evening are what, what we're calling our identified needs, mapped out over FY '24 through '28. So again, we always keep in mind what our mission and our vision are. The mission of the Lunenburg Public Schools is to provide all students with the skills, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning, so that they may find their own path to successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. And our vision is that we're committed to becoming a leader in education by focusing on our values of attending to the personal well-being of the students, providing high-quality curricula and student-centered instruction for deeper learning at all levels, and promoting the development of attributes and skills necessary for continuous learning for all. And I will also provide you some context that everything that we do falls within this framework, our strategy for continuous improvement. And I always refer to them as the four big bucket areas, transforming teaching and learning, communication and operations, cultivating climate and culture, equity access, opportunity, and achievement for all students. We thought it would be important, because it's gotten complicated in recent years with all of the grant funding available, allowing us to have as many positions currently as we do. So we thought we'd start off with a review of the current grant-funded staff. So the grant-funded positions for FY '23 and FY '24, these are those largely Esser grant-funded positions. We've typically categorized staff positions in either an instructional realm, a leadership realm, or services and support. Any of the bold text positions here are positions that are currently funded with grant money, Esser II money, through FY '23. All of the others are funded through Esser III, which gives us another year of funding.
What does the red mean?
Shall we address that on this slide or on the next?
Oh, you can address it later. That's fine.
It's important
Figure it out later.
We'll reference this in a moment.
It's a mystery.
I think it's important to, you know, see visually that there's, there are two positions here that will tie into the five-year plan.
For these are listed as FY '23 and '24. The Esser, just, I know I'm repeating what you just said, but bear with me, just for my own retention and understanding. The Esser II is in bold.
Including the red.
Including the red. And does it expire, it expires before the Esser III?
It does. We're looking at these positions in, in terms of a fiscal year. The grant itself expires in September.
Of?
So Esser II, these positions would, would be funded through June 30th. But the, the grant has to be expended by September 30th?
Yes.
September 30th of '23.
'23, okay. So we're in our la, we're effectively in our last school year of Esser II right now. I thought that, but I wanted to make sure.
And at the same time, we're also expending funds for Esser III. And those are those other positions that you see on the slide.
Okay. And I may be getting ahead of myself here, but are there Esser III funds to backfill? Get it, all right.
Segue to the red.
Let's just jump into the Come on. Attention is mounting. So dramatic. That means we'll just jump into it. So one thing I, I just want to clarify. The two nurses are, are being funded out of a Department of Public Health grant, not Esser grant. So so without further ado, we'll, we'll start talking about the, the proposed five-year staffing plan that, that we're moving forward on. So year, year one, which is, these positions are going to be reflected in the upcoming budget somehow, some way. And we're still working with the leadership team on how we're going to address some of the, the duties and student needs in these positions. So under the instructional positions, teachers, it's a humanities position at the high school. Humanities is an English social studies position. We are recommending that the targeted math position We are recommending that the targeted math position, that is funded under ESER II, the administration is requesting that the school committee consider that to be funded with ESER III funds.
For next year.
And that's why that's in red, and that's why the council, counselor, tier one at the primary school is also in red. That's an ESER II position that's expiring at the end of the year. There's ESER III funds to support that. I'll just get ahead of myself a bit. That's a discussion in February.
Mm-hmm.
That's when the next ESER report is due, which kind of coincides with the discussion around the local budget, too. So, there'll be a recommendation from the administration on those positions. There's action, and you can delay the action until we have more information, but those, with the recommended budget and the recommended use of ESER funds will coincide as we move forward. The next position is a dean at the high school, and we're still working on what that looks like. We know that there's some new funded, unfunded mandates that need to be addressed, the fallout of many people's time during the day, and probably maybe some experience. So, do you want to speak to anything about that?
I'll speak to that now. There was a change to discipline law in the state that went into effect November 8th. None of us had any advance warning, nor did the Department of Ed, it seems, know that this was coming. In a meeting last week, Commissioner indicated that additional information from DESI as to how they would recommend schools approach the change in the law, that that would be forthcoming, and that they would have some opportunity for professional development around that, probably after the start of the new year. Essentially, what the law does is sort of force schools to ensure that they have done almost like a tiered or progressive discipline approach before moving to suspension of students. That oftentimes is that restorative justice model, which is basically an opportunity for learning, right? As an example, and this is something that became available several years ago at this point, when vaping became a thing that high school students were doing, somebody developed a vaping curriculum basically for, you know, making kids aware of what this does to you, and therefore encouraging you to make different choices with the knowledge that you now have. Our guidance staff, our administrators, they don't have time when, let's say, a student is caught vaping. Well, they don't, they're not going to sit down now with the student and move through a curriculum. We're going to need additional staff to be able to handle some of that opportunity for learning and making better choices. Additionally, it could look like peer mediation amongst peers, students who are having conflict. This is going to have to happen during the day, and we tried to figure out how are we going to make that work? Who is going to be able to do that? As we're talking through it, we're not sure that it needs to be a full-time position. It may end up being a stipended function. I hope to have a better handle on what the Department of Ed is expecting this is going to look like sometime in January. But we wanted to make sure, as a placeholder, that we were making you aware that there may be a need for some staffing to assist with compliance with the new law. So, it's not so much a mandate that all schools have to have a dean, as much as schools have to have programming that students would move through before you move to the level of a suspension. We just need a structure to be able to do that. So, we're still, we're still working our way through what that looks like. Hopefully, that wasn't too confusing.
Is this something that a vice principal could take on as duties?
I don't believe so. They have an awful lot on their plate at the moment, as it is. You know, you heard earlier that we've got kiddos in crisis, you know, from time to time, day to day, never know when that's going to happen. The assistant principals also took on the role of leading all of our 504 meetings, so they have that responsibility. I don't, I don't know that we could make that model work. Again, I'll have a better sense of what is expected after we hear more from the Commissioner and whatever information is put out from the Department of Ed. If that's something that we could make work, we would do it. But we sort of foresee that a student would have to, you know, spend some time moving through potentially a curriculum, or through meetings with mediation, so on and so forth, and those sorts of events happen unplanned, but yet would have to be addressed. So, again, we're grappling with what does this look like? But we're open to all kinds of options. We're looking at everything. But I just didn't want this to be a surprise sometime in January. Oh, by the way, we need some additional staff to help us with this. So, it's on the radar here, what this looks like, whether it's a stipended staff member or it's a part-time position, a full-time, we don't know right now.
Just one point of clarification. I'm sure that these issues aren't as extreme in the elementary levels, but in middle school, there are oftentimes serious behavior problems.
Yes.
This is as applicable in the middle school as it is in the high school?
Yeah. I mean, essentially, this model will have to be available to all of the kids, and we absolutely anticipate that there would be middle school students engaged in this as well. Again, lots of details to try to work through on this. So, all I can say is, stay tuned. We'll have more information.
Dr. Burnham, I just want to confirm. We're talking about Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37H and 3/4, correct?
Oh, this would be a quiz.
Sorry.
I don't have my cheat sheet with me.
We got a lawyer here.
But yes, yeah, it's all in that larger context of the shift in the, in the discipline law.
Yeah, okay.
It does not impede our ability to immediately suspend...
There's two, there's three carve-outs, yeah.
Yes. But they, they want to make sure that schools, that that's not the automatic go-to for everything.
I can, I mean, this is not, I'm not offering legal advice, I'm just saying experientially, New Hampshire adopted something similar to this a couple of years ago, and I think it's wise of you and the district to plan for increased cost.
Thank you.
And when you said some people plan and some people don't, I'm assuming you meant the kids. The kids, sometimes they plan this.
Yeah, they don't plan, oh, I think Mr. Michael will be available to offer me some peer mediation tomorrow, so I think I'll plan my...
Correct, okay. That's what I just was like...
My misbehavior for tomorrow.
Okay. Got it.
It is amazing that this managed to become law without it being on the radar of basically anybody.
Yeah.
It's just baffling.
This isn't the first time.
It's baffling.
That was a meaningful pause.
Yeah. I, I don't know that the Department of Ed found out exactly when we found out, but I don't...
Seems like it wasn't too far apart.
I don't think, I don't think that they were involved from the ground floor on this change. So, that's my impression, based on comments that the Commissioner made. There is another meeting with the Commissioner scheduled next week for superintendent, so perhaps there'll be some additional information there. But we were told last week to anticipate that they would be putting out some guidance.
Should make for a very fun, practical civics lesson when we have our legislators come visit us.
Definitely.
It got passed in August, and it's enacted on November 8th, like in the middle of nothing?
And we, we received, superintendents received a communication from the Mass Association of School Superintendents alerting us to this about a week prior, maybe a little bit less.
Somebody's got to do some better bill tracking, because that's crazy. That is crazy.
Needless to, needless to say, that, that remains to be seen, what the district needs to, how we're going to respond to that. So, it's a placeholder, and hopefully, we'll have more information as we move forward. Going into services and supports, we want to have a psychologist move to, we want to reenact that position. I'll talk about where we think there's a funding source that will support that position, which we'll talk about during the budget meeting. The counselor, the tier one SEL at the primary, the administration is recommending that that is funded through ESER III. A new position, a secretary, it's, it would be a school year position that handles new student enrollment at the K level and new students coming in on a daily or weekly basis, and that person would also handle some of our process coordinating duties, which is special education meetings, setups, dealing with parents. With that, that function, part of that could be, or will be funded from an alternative source other than the local budget. And then finally, a licensed practical nurse. We have two right now. We're looking to extend an additional one with a possible grant being extended into next year. So, we have a few positions here that we're earmarking to the local budget, and some that are being shifted to grants.
Potentially earmarking to local budget.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
The secretary, I'm wondering if that could entail busing enrollment and...
Yeah, okay. I didn't give, okay. Go ahead, please.
Yes. Yes, because, you know, oftentimes, a new student registers, we have to set up the bus transportation, so that, that would be part and parcel with that.
Right.
They would also be able to handle the calls for a change to a bus route. You know, we sold our house, moved to a different house in Lunenburg, I need to be on a different bus line, that kind of a thing.
Thank you.
Sorry, I failed to mention that. So, the, the big year that, that we're really focused in on is year two, which is FY '25. So, this is when, on the previous slide, all those positions, those grant positions are at risk of being lost. And so, these are on our, on our radar for continuation. I'll say this publicly. We, we know that the local budget cannot accommodate all these positions. We're not going to be asking for money to fund all these positions. But at this point in time, the administration does not know what positions are going to And maybe there's going to be some grant money. Don't know about that either. But these are the positions that, that we're putting on the docket for consideration, knowing that not all of them will be funded. And I think we've alluded, you've seen, these are, you've seen most of these positions, except for two, which is, you know, our Title I grant keeps on going down slightly every year, and in the past, we, for our Title I program, part of the local budget would pay for their salary. When I came into the district, we were phasing them off of the local budget and completely onto the grant, because our grants were going up, and now they've seemed to leveled out and possibly being decreased. So, I'm talking Title I and Title IV and Title II way.
So, by percentage shift to local budget, what you're communicating here is that we're not paying for the whole position, we're paying for a portion of that position.
Correct.
So, at this point, and there's another sheet I want to share with the committee, we've identified 20%.
Okay.
If it's, it could be 10%, it could be 15%, it's what the local budget can afford.
And just, I think, just for a little bit of context, we don't receive our title grant, Title I, II, III allocations until late July, early August. If we were to find that we had a significant decrease in our grant, we might not be able to keep our Title I coordinator, which we would be finding out weeks before school would open. And you've all met Deirdre McLean, and she's doing a phenomenal job coaching teachers, not only in literacy, curriculum, and instruction, but also in data and intervention. So, we just think that it's prudent to start to transition bit by bit, portion of the salary for that position over to the local budget.
I've got a number of questions and comments on this slide, if you'll bear with me for a couple of minutes here.
Okay.
So, for the payroll specialist, we currently use services from Town Hall for payroll purposes. Is that, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
The, the, we work hand-in-hand with the payroll at Town Hall. So, when we say payroll, that is processing timesheets for hourly employees, that's doing appointment letters. So, there is a piece, there are individuals here at Town Hall that, that put the numbers into Munis to get the checks cut. We provide the data to do that.
Okay, so that doesn't change. This basically takes on some of those more administrative duties around tallying timesheets, getting offer sheets out.
Right.
More work that falls under your realm rather than Town Hall's realm.
Right.
Okay.
You know, this is kind of a, a plan, maybe with a reorganization within the, in the, in the department, as people, you know, just with turnover.
Succession plan.
We might have an opportunity to expand into this position.
Yep, yep, okay.
So, it's, it's on the, it's on the, on the docket for consideration.
So, I, I raised some concerns to the superintendent yesterday, I believe, via email on this topic. This information was reflected in a spreadsheet that you had shared on the shared drive yesterday, or the day before. And, you know, obviously, this is, this is a wave that we've seen coming, and I've been talking about this for a couple of years now, so this is it. I suspect that this is not something that is unique to Lunenburg. I think we've done a pretty good job in maximizing the dollars that we've been given from ESER. And I don't anticipate that some of the problems, particularly the social and emotional problems that a lot of these functions deal with, are going to be gone. functions deal with are going to be gone come FY '25. So the loss of those revenues is going to be pretty impactful here. And you're right, the local budget is not, I mean, this has got to be a million and a half plus dollars right here.
I can tell you in a second. I count, it's, those salaries about $654,000.
All right, well, I overshot. All right.
So that's an enormous amount. So we know, realistic, we're not asking for that increase.
Okay. So one of the conversations that ensued today between the chair and the superintendent and myself is, well, where are we at relative to, is there a possibility of getting some relief from the state? It's unlikely the federal government's going to come and bail us out on this one, but who knows? What what lobbying is happening, the superintendent can speak to this, but it doesn't appear like there's a whole lot right now relative to this. So I think that we as a committee need to get proactive pretty darn quickly. Because number one, I'm sure we're not the only ones in this position. And I think we need to think about, back to the discussion a month or so ago about how we deal with the fiscal forecast. We can't forecast all of this and say, this is our spending plan. We can forecast a two and a half percent increase and say the, these are the negative effects of everything we're going to lose in FY '25 as a result of this revenue shortfall. And I think we need to be very crisp in terms of how we illustrate that. And be thoughtful in terms of how we communicate it because this is, this is a pretty big deal.
And just a term that the superintendent and I will begin to use during the budget process is some unknowns. And one of the unknowns in FY '25 is that'll be the first year of a few contracts, the first year of contract renewals for some of our, for some of our groups. So it's, you know, it's, some things are coming together, we'll get through it.
Additionally, you know, we, there may be retirements announced that allow us an opportunity to rethink whether or not that is a position that we would refill, or do we utilize the FTE to keep one of these? So it's, it's a real challenge for us to say, yep, all of these would be gone because we don't know if, if there might be some additional money. We don't know if there might be some retirements in the district that allow us to restructure or reorganize in a way that gets us some of these positions. The the danger in just saying, okay, well, we would eliminate all of these things. All of the staff that we have, and you saw, we have some pretty fabulous staff, would be now anticipating that they need to have a different job. And if they can find one, they may leave the district. And we've lost a great value add to the district when we didn't potentially have to. So I, I'm really reluctant to go out now and say these are the positions that will be eliminated at this moment, given, given what data we have. You heard folks, we are tracking data.
Yeah, so I think you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't here. And I understand that. And I'm very sensitive to what you just explained. We don't know who's going to retire in a year and a half from now. We don't know what revenues are going to shake loose from the sky in a year and a half from now. We do know that there's a tidal wave coming. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to come up with a plan for how we can communicate and advocate for ourselves sooner rather than later.
I would say a part of that too, that communication is communicating with the select board and the town manager, those, the expectations, what we're seeing. So that when they do potentially see an increase in state funding, that the schools actually get to absorb that increase and that we're not, the town manager and the select board are not expecting the school to be taking a three, 3% increase when the state is potentially going to be increasing our funding.
Again, we don't, I mean, the problem is, is we don't know those things, right? I mean, we, the millionaire's tax could easily go to higher ed, you know, like the, but you're right. And by the way, we got an 11% increase last year in Chapter 70 that we did not absorb.
Town did, yeah.
Exactly.
We did not absorb that increase.
Right.
We absorbed a portion of it. So you're right, you're absolutely right. It needs to be communicated broadly. I think the challenge here, and this is again, right back to the theme from a month ago, is how do we illustrate this? And who do we illustrate it to? And I think you're right, the town is part of it. In my view, we got to get our legislators involved in this yesterday, you know, and
And that was the advice that I was offered when I inquired with the Mass Association of School Superintendents as to what action, if any, they are taking, advocating on behalf of school districts for additional funding when our ESER funds sunset, because the need is still going to be there, right? I mean, I've started explaining that COVID was a long duration event. And I've indicated earlier this year that while it is not front and center, and we aren't testing students to allow them into school after they've been exposed to COVID, and we are still seeing absences of staff and students. And this year, as you see all across the news, it's not just COVID illnesses, it's the flu. It's RSV for some of our younger students. So those are not, you know, I have the sniffles one day, but I'll be better tomorrow, I'll be back in school. They're out for several days feeling unwell. So the COVID impact is still present. It was a long duration event. The recovery is not going to happen overnight. It is also going to be a long duration event. And one more year of the funding is not going to suffice really for the recovery of the impact from COVID, both the social, emotional, behavioral health realm, as well as the academic learning loss impact. So when I inquired, they were not, they were not pursuing that avenue at this time. And advised that, you know, it might be beneficial to reach out to local officials.
I think that the idea that we would just focus on how to prioritize the impacts of budget def, like holes in the budget for positions misses the point that I think maybe you and Carol were kind of hinting at, which is we need to do that, and we need to figure out if there are any alternative sources of funds, so that if we're doing both, hopefully we meet in the middle. Because if, if we do what you're hesitant to do, which is to say like, you know, the following 15 positions are cut as of 2025, and I think that's, for the reasons you outlined, kind of folly, but if we don't also explore the possibility of alternate funding, I think that that's equally equally bad. So like, what, what steps, Madam Chairwoman, what steps can we take as a school committee to interact with legislators and explain to them what Dr. Burnham just put really eloquently about the long-term effects of COVID and how we get money to secure these positions?
I think what we have to do is twofold. One is, as Brian said, make sure that the community in general knows we are not expecting to fund all this out of our local budget. We are not going to present you with a $650,000 bill. However, if we do get additional funding from the state that's supposed to be for our low-income kids and kids that are struggling, we would like to get it and not have half of it end up in the town. And we're partners with the town, and I, and they do a lot for us. But in this particular instance, I think whatever we get from Chapter 70 needs to go to school if we can possibly do that within the local town government. The other piece is, in the laundry list of things that are waiting for this election to finally be settled, I think we need to meet with the state legislators and talk to them about many things, but this primarily. And perhaps do a little research as to at the moment, or once they reconvene and reorganize, who is on the education committee? And how do we lobby the education committee? And which communities around us would be willing to lobby along with us?
Which was very effective with the SOA.
With the SOA. Because the little voice of us in 12,000 people in Lunenburg, they're not going to listen to. They will try and say, well, that's nice, and I'm sorry you have a problem, but they're not going to listen to that. But
And this is not a unique problem.
Well, this is not unique. This is happening everywhere. It's happening in the big cities, I'm sure. I can't imagine Worcester isn't going to have a major problem.
Well, I think the subtle difference maybe is that their house is on fire right now. And ours is
We're treading water here. We're doing okay. We're making, we're making
Yeah, but what I, you know, and speaking with educational leaders in some of the gateway communities and, you know, like, they've got some very immediate problems that, you know, they're not, they're not focused where we are, I don't think. But I think that there are probably plenty of districts that are like us, that are
That are like us, but the attention goes to the big cities. We need to get a conglomerate of people that, conglomerate of towns that can work together. And I think we, I think though, that's all I have. I mean, as far as what to do about this funding. Clearly, we said we were not going to, and we won't, dump the bill at the, at the feet of the townspeople. But we are still responsible for these kids, and this is still what is needed. And it's not like we have all kinds of extra things in our curriculum staffing that we can say, well, we'll take one position from here and one position from there. We don't have those positions. Small town don't have those positions.
So just one other comment on Chapter 70, with my very limited understanding of Chapter 70, and I know some of you, Brian, I think you did attend the workshop we had a year or so ago, and
It's confusing.
It's, it's a nightmare to understand. But my limited understanding of it is that we crossed a demographic threshold a year ago that caused us to get that 11% increase. There's no new threshold on the horizon that we're likely to cross. And as a result of that, we're going to be back in hold harmless territory, most likely, for quite some time.
Which has raised a little.
A little bit, but we're talking 2%, not 11.
Not enough to
And, and it's very nominal. So probably not keeping up with inflation and our general expenses. So I don't think that that's a likely meaningful relief valve, unfortunately.
I would agree, but whatever funds we do get from Chapter 70,
They gotta come here.
It would be extremely helpful if they went to the school to help mitigate this. You know, whatever it is would be my, would be my thought. And actually, we will, when we talk about topics for the discussion, we will talk about our legislators tonight.
Sorry, we just hijacked your presentation.
I think even going back to that too, like the millionaire's tax that passed, like, we need to make sure that the select board and the town manager understand that that was passed to give education more funding.
Yes.
I think it's not just keeping it at the 3%.
All right, let's slip to
We'll let you continue.
Slip to year three. So this is a, this is kind of a down year. Just, we put in a, a year of less of an impact, just not knowing what the outcome of FY '25 will be, in addition, the contractual negotiated amounts. So we are proposing, you know, possibly a, a, more of a percentage to the Title I coordinator, and then a percentage of the reading teacher that's on Title I, if allowed. And then also a new position, an early childhood coordinator position. And I'm drawing, I know, there'd be, if you could just say a
We've seen this as a need for a number of years, but it just has not risen to a level of a high priority. But more, more to say about that when we finally get to the place of advocating for an early childhood coordinator position.
We're going to need space for that program too.
Well, that's another issue. Potentially, yep.
Year four. So this is moving forward and offering or providing more offerings to students at different levels. So a foreign language teacher at the middle school, a technology teacher at the high school, and a sign language teacher at the high school. Holding steady on potential percentage increases to the local budget on a, two Title I employees. And no service and support, new positions or changes.
Right. So when you get to this particular year, these teaching positions aren't identified need, critical need to meet the needs of kids. This is more about restoring and expanding programmatic offerings that would be beneficial for the overall school and learning experience for, for kids. The technology position could allow us to expand pathways for business, computer science. So again, that's, that's more about expanding opportunities for kids versus meeting a critical need, which the positions up until this particular year are much more about meeting a critical need.
So foreign language and technology, I get. Sign language is a bit of a surprise.
So I've been talking about that since I got to the district. There are kiddos who have learning disabilities that make it a significant challenge for them to take and learn a foreign language. It's the auditory piece. Now, our option is to waive them from that requirement if, if they're deemed eligible through special ed. It would be a fantastic thing if instead of saying, well, you just don't take a foreign language at all, if they could take another language that is a global language that they can master. It's a wish for me to expand. I think it would be a great, great thing. I mean, it potentially takes kiddos down a new career path. So.
Okay.
So on that same line, year five, expanding the instructional team down at Turkey Hill with our rural cultures program.
Which would be kind of like the intro precursor type to foreign language.
Yeah. And another foreign language middle school teacher. Under the leadership, we're still looking to shift some of the Title I coordinator or reading teacher salaries to the local budget. And then finally, instructional data specialist in the district.
Which I've been also talking about for several years. We are very fortunate right now that we have somebody We are very fortunate right now that we have somebody with that level of expertise in our Title One Coordinator. But not all Title One coordinators are going to have that level of understanding of assessment data, intervention, models based on data, how to run data cycles, so on and so forth. So anticipating a time where we may lose a particular person with a skill set that's much needed, um, again, it's more of a, a placeholder because it, this is an identified need. We need somebody to be the keeper and leader around all data that impacts instruction. And, and it's not just assessment data, right? Like, we look at attendance and, and other data points, right? Referrals to the office, so on and so forth. Who's the master of all that data, right? And who is parsing it out and getting it to teachers? You can't just have a mass, massive archive and just hand it over to teachers because for student confidentiality, teachers really need to have access only to the students in front of them in a given year, not all students in the whole school. So, you know, the, the, the track for moving on achievement requires assessment of data to determine what children need in order to achieve at a higher level. So, again, this is just keeping it on people's radar, that instructional data for our district is, is, it's an important thing. It's satisfied at the moment, given the individual that we have as the Title One Coordinator.
We're talking about Deirdre.
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right. Just like...
Yeah. I mean, when I interviewed her and I, I, get that contract out quick.
So she basically is capable of doing two different things and we're lucky to have her.
She wears multiple hats and we are extraordinarily lucky.
The data she's managing today is, includes work and data that is outside the bounds of Title One. Is that what you're describing or...
Well, it's not necessarily outside the bounds of Title One because we need to have the whole picture of the child to understand what their needs are in terms of tiered supports so that they can access, um, the curriculum and perform well, learn well. What I'm saying is, is that I, we come before the committee all the time and we give you a report on what the assessment results look like. But the data that we use for instruction, for programmatic decisions, for placement of students in special ed placements, um, is a big, big, broad batch of data. It's not our eye-ready assessment benchmark.
Let's keep Deirdre.
Yes, yes.
It's a, I, I'd like to learn more about this. I don't want to prolong the meeting tonight, but I, I think that this, now, I come from this space, I come, I worked for corp, well, worked for corporations for many years that invest an awful lot of money in data and who manages it, the technology that's needed to do it.
Schedule a meeting and you can come chat with our team.
What I really, but, but my, my, the, the short point that I want to make here is that this seems frivolous. It may, for those who are not familiar with the potential benefits, this is a multiplier, potentially, um, that I would, once I dig into it, my, my inclination is that I would prioritize and move it up relative to some other things that you have.
Well, like I said, at the moment, at the moment, we have this niche filled.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we felt we could afford, given FY '25 and all the great big decisions that we have to make, um, that we would push it out a little bit. But, um, like I said, Deirdre came to this role of Title One with so much more, I, I couldn't have, you know, designed a better person with the skill set that was needed for this district than Deirdre.
So, just a, a couple of other, um, observations. Number one, I think, you know, people who are actually doing teaching to students, I think, as I, we talked about in a previous meeting, like, in my mind, I think we've got a really great faculty today and I think our stu, teacher to student ratios are good. Our spending per, per pupil is still pretty low relative to like, like, um, size communities in the state. And when I look at the top performing schools, particularly those in the Boston metro area, a lot of the themes that you've touched on here today around the teachers, um, there's elementary and middle school foreign language. There's, you know, like, tho, those kinds of things exist in the top-tier school districts. And I think that from a vision perspective, that's what we ought to be striving to. Maslow's hierarchy, it's probably a little higher up, given some of the stuff that we're dealing with today, and I, I understand that, and I understand the prioritization. My count on here, it was just a quick glance, I think there's net 17 new positions over a five-year period. Give or take one or two, if that might, do we have space to do all of this?
So, um, I would say that the positions in the next two years here largely...
A lot of these are people we have right now.
You've already, you've already got them.
That's not an issue.
Yep.
And some of the out years are percentages of salary being moved into the local budget and off grants. So...
I might have double counted those.
When you think about actual new bodies and new classroom opportunities like World Cultures and Foreign Language and so on and so forth, um, we will have room. It's not optimal. Optimal is every teacher has their own classroom that they don't ever have to leave from the time they arrive in the morning to the time they leave, whatever time they leave, in the afternoon. During their prep time, they're in their space, right? They can prep all their things, the kids come into their space. That's optimal.
It's optimal for the teacher, but not resource allocation.
Correct.
Efficiency, right.
But can we bring additional teachers, like, expanding foreign language in? Yes. But the problem is, during prep time, teacher has to leave their room. And the teacher, the foreign language teacher would be one that doesn't have a dedicated room, but would move room to room to teach a class. And I can tell you that for the vast majority of my career as a teacher, um, probably with the exception of about two years total, um, I did not have my own dedicated classroom. I shared a classroom with pretty much everyone in my entire science department over a course of years. And I can tell you that there's a lot of benefit to moving and seeing what other teachers do, because as you're waiting in the hallway to move your stuff in, you hear how they're doing things, you see displays in their room.
That's an interesting perspective.
You know, it's, you, you get to observe the teaching styles and activities and classroom setups of a wide variety of people. It's, it really, it's extraordinarily beneficial.
That's, that's a really interesting perspective. I thought you were going to next tell us that you walked the school four miles in two feet of snow, both directions.
Yeah, no.
You know, but no, that's an interesting...
Yeah, it was a huge benefit to my, my professional growth.
Did, either, I mean, just...
I have.
And the...
When I was the music teacher, I taught music for a while. When I was the music teacher, I had a, um, milk crate with a string with the stuff in it and my guitar slung on my back. And I went from classroom to classroom and I learned, this is not how I want to run a classroom, this is out of control. What is she doing different than this one? Everybody is fine and nobody says boo. What's the, I, it, it, I do see her point very clearly.
I was a little more lucky I had better than a milk crate. I actually had a cart.
You had a cart.
With two shelves.
You should have seen the milk crate going up the stairs.
I did, however, sling my whiteboards with my agenda mapped out for the day.
So I got lucky, I just missed that our school actually was renovated, we had an expansion, and I showed up the year after the expansion was built, but there were definitely teachers on carts and it happens.
Yeah.
But, uh, that just kind of leads me until like, that's the potential for a new Turkey Hill. Maybe it absorbs a grade two to give more space for more classrooms too.
So yes, we can accommodate expanding program offerings and adding a few teachers. Yep.
I too was not expecting the answer you three gave about moving. I thought you, that's, that's interesting.
Well, there are benefits to having your own space, but there are an awful lot of benefits to not having your own space too.
It is nice to have your own space, there's no question, but...
Right, does a big smile, yes.
I'd like to, uh, not go off track, but, um, just a summary of the year-by-year breakdown on, uh, positions per location in the district. This, this, uh, chart was shared with the school committee. We tried to make it as clear as possible. A lot of this, a lot of this information is confusing, we just, we're not trying to pull one over on the school committee or the public, but there's just, and it really is centered around FY '25 and the moving targets within that year.
Right. Because we still see those positions would be an identified need.
So, uh, thi, this will be on our website as well for the public to view, along with the, the presentation. We still have a few more slides and I'll, I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
So we also like to think about some of our non-staffing needs. Just, again, this is a little bit of a, a precursor to, you know, budget development. These are some of the factors that we think about. So in the realm of climate and culture, you know that we're doing work around, um, diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, we know that we're going to be, um, doing some work on core values for the district in the next year or so. You know that we've now, uh, taken on a commitment to, uh, family partnership and it's still really important to us that we continue to build a school, climate and culture where all the staff and the students feel happy to come every day, that it's a safe, caring and inclusive place to be. We know that we're going to continue looking at curriculum and data. In the last year or two, we had a focus on math and ELA curriculum. We've moved in that direction, the SEL curriculum as well. Um, however, we do need to, um, be looking at, um, all of our curricular areas with a diversity lens. More will come on that. Uh, we did have a Department of Ed tiered focus monitoring, basically it's the old version of a DESI audit. And they, they wanted to see some, um, some action taken in a couple of areas and, uh, look, having a structured, um, mapped-out, uh, protocol for teachers to review curriculum materials, um, to ensure that they are looking with a, a diversity lens, to ensure that the curriculum is balanced and represents, um, a diverse, uh, perspective. So more, more will come on that at a later date, but we are definitely going to be doing that work. We are currently working on, um, uh, developing a system for recording and archiving data so that you can have longitudinal data for students, so you can see growth, uh, or progress made over multiple years. And we're also working to develop, um, a comfort level, uh, with data cycles for teachers. In the realm of professional development, really, it's, it's still broad. Uh, we're going to continue some professional development in literacy and math. Again, we're going to hit on that diversity, equity and inclusion piece, um, continued social, emotional learning, uh, as well as, um, some of, of what will come from our experience with the family-school partnership initiative. We'll be able to identify what kinds of, um, professional development we would be looking to provide for teachers to build those relationships with, with families. And then of course, you know, we have our capital improvements and, um, you know, what you saw this year focused around safety and security upgrades, um, as well as some facility improvement. So, um, just so that you know that, we think more broadly than just the staffing, uh, that's on the horizon. So next steps in this process, um, we're, we're pretty much adhering to the process that we've used for the last several years, but it's mapped out here. You'll, you'll see us present, um, a proposed budget. We're targeting the January 4th meeting. We think that we will be able to meet that, uh, target, which is two weeks earlier than we typically do. But I, I do think that, uh, we'll be able to make that mark. We typically also have a meeting with the town manager in January. Uh, we will absolutely be talking with her about what we've mapped out as our identified needs and talk to her about how she wants to incorporate that into her five-year forecast. Clearly, we're not looking for her to add 10 positions in FY '25 in her forecast. And then typically, we present the budget that we present to the school committee, um, at faculty meeting, so that they know what, what we're proposing. Uh, so we will visit schools during faculty meeting time and go over that. We'll keep the budget Q and A sessions and we'll, we'll plan to have one in February and again in March. Uh, right now, we're on target for, uh, school committee approval following a budget hearing at our meeting on March 15th and, uh, presentation to the finance committee minus philosophy on March 16th, which will be great. And then, uh, of course, this process all comes to a conclusion with, uh, annual town meeting in May.
Any additional questions or conversations?
So you had talked about grants, uh, during the five-year plan. Who currently writes and researches grants for Lunenburg?
So we don't have a grant writer. Typically, uh, grants come to our attention in a variety of ways. Some of them are DESI and DESI pushes out, uh, weekly communications and oftentimes they include grant opportunities for a variety of, of things, which is how we went after the, uh, high-quality math, uh, curriculum materials, the literacy, um, other times I, you know, there are groups that might get ahold of all the superintendent's emails and blast out, you know, oh, here's a, a, a social, emotional learning, uh, grant opportunity. As an example, when we had Jamie Millet in the role of Behavioral, um, Health Coordinator, I used to bounce those things forward to her, ask her to assess whether or not this was in line with where we were headed. I don't want to go after a grant that takes us off target from where we're, we're looking to go, but if it was in line with where we were headed, um, she would let me know. And then either she would take on the role of writing that grant or she would sit with me and/or Juliana Hanscom for special ed and we would jointly write the grant. Things come across my email all the time. And I generally speaking bounce them out to the experts that we have in the district. As an example, sometimes there are, you know, opportunities around civics now, has been a major focus for the last couple of years. And when those things come across my inbox, um, they go out to Warren Stevenson, who is our department head for history, uh, at the high school, as well as Lisa LeBlanc, who is our K-8, uh, social studies coordinator, and of course, um, Annika Scott, who's our Director of Teaching and Learning. They size up what the opportunity is and whether or not, uh, it's something that we can pursue, and if it is, we do. So there's no... So there's no one person that has that responsibility. It's a team effort. And I, I would say that we've done a pretty good job without a dedicated grant writer because we've gone after some competitive grants and gotten them. We've gone after some competitive grants and not gotten them too. But sometimes we don't, we don't rate as highly in terms of the priority criteria that they're looking for in the applicants. Sometimes we might be on the margin of meeting all of those criteria, but if they've got a lot more districts applying for things that really meet their criteria, then they, they typically go to them first. So, but we, if we think we've got a shot at it, we'll go for it. And we're going to continue to, to take that approach. So if, if there are things out there that we could potentially fund staff or curriculum, we pursue it.
So I guess my follow-up was, which I think you kind of answered, was, does a grant writer need to be in the five-year plan? Like, do we need to see a position like that or do we have that under control?
So I would say, you know, from my lens, I'm going to say no. If we had all kinds of resources, I'd say, yeah, that would be great. I, as an assistant superintendent for curriculum, was part of a collaborative of other assistant superintendents for curriculum. And we connected through our collaborative, our special education collaborative. So all the member districts, we, we got together, we started working together. And we asked the collaborative if they would consider posting for a part-time grant writer, which they did, which was fantastic, we thought. The problem is, is that the grant writer doesn't have the expertise in the area that you're pursuing the grant, which means the grant writer has to rely on us to give them the rationale for the narrative, the data to submit. So essentially, we're doing it.
All the work.
Yeah. So I would say no, it's not, it's not something that I think right now. Maybe in next year's revision of a five-year, maybe in '29 or '30, depending on, on how we're doing with things. It's always great to have more hands-on because you can pursue more, right? Like, to coin a phrase that Mr. Beardmore has used, bandwidth. We've been pursuing an awful lot. We are in the Universal Design for Learning Academy, the Social Emotional Learning Academy with the Department of Ed, the Literacy Academy with the Department of Ed. We've been in the Teacher Diversification Program with the Department of Ed. We're now in the Family Partnership Initiative Program with the Department of Ed. It tends to be the same core group of central office leaders in addition to other staff that are on all of these things, leading and managing all of them. So sometimes things, you know, the Department of Ed has other things that they offer and open up to districts to participate in, and we have conversations around whether or not we think it's that cost benefit kind of thing. Is this something that we can take on? Is it something that we need to take on? Is it something we can let go for a year and see if they're offering it again next year and jump on next year? We also consider if we commit to this, what's the commitment for our teachers? Because they've had an awful lot on their plate. So all of those sorts of things get factored into what opportunities we pursue, whether there's grant monies attached to that or not. But sometimes with grant monies from the state, you kind of have to be in one of their pipelines with some of this programming to, to be in a good position to be eligible. So, yeah, it would be great if I, if I had more individuals to kind of share some of that workload. But again, based on my experience, the individual really can't do it alone because the individual doesn't have the expertise and the data and the understanding to write a narrative without relying on the people who have that background and expertise.
I think that the, and I appreciate your explanation, it was very thorough. I, I think that from an outside-in perspective, one of the ways that you look at grants is it's free money, right? Which it's all, it's our money because it's all coming from taxpayers one way or another, but, but it's not money coming from the local budget to pay something that ideally we would probably either not be able to do or have to pay for ourselves. And so there's a clear-cut financial benefit and I think one would think of this at, without the benefit of the explanation that you just gave, it's like the Michael Jordan quote, like I missed every shot I never took, or something along those lines, right? Getting as many at-bats, as many reps, whatever sports analogy you want to use, the more you apply for, the more you get theoretically. The chat, I, I've been in a similar role applying for awards in the technology realm. There's all these awards that come up and do you meet the criteria and then you got to fill out a form and send in for the award and you, you try to find the right subject matter expert to give you the information. You may leave it to them to do the application and then you don't know if they did it or not, or you got to chase them down or, and there's an administrative piece of this. The hounding, the scheduling, the follow-up, like, in my mind, that's probably more important than the writing in a lot of cases, you know what I mean? And I, the reason why I kind of give you that preface is, do we have like at least one person who's kind of got the grant puzzle or is at least doing that tracking? So when you do toss that over to Mr. Stevenson, you know that Mr. Stevenson, he's a bad person to pick on because I know he's very thorough, but read his email, responded, you know what I mean? Like all of those sort of just basic management stuff that's really, that can get away from you because you've got so much going on, as you just illustrated.
Yep. So oftentimes, for, for the most part, because I'm the one that pushed it out, they will look at it, they'll talk to each other, and somebody typically gets back to me and says, we think this is something we should take a pass on, we're not really there yet, or we're beyond that point, and that would be taking a step backward, we don't need to do that work again. So typically they do follow-up with me directly and then the grants typically have to be signed by me to be submitted. So...
So you've got a ticker.
I know when they've, when they've gone. And once they're awarded, Mr. Cassidy knows all the grants that we're managing and, you know, a couple of our grant managers were on the meeting tonight. Juliana Hanscom is one, she handles all of the special ed realm and minus a behavioral health coordinator at the moment, she's sort of taking that piece on too. Mrs. Scott has pursued a lot of the curriculum and professional development opportunity-type grants and Deirdre McLean is the one who's managing all of the Title I, II, and IV grants. So it's, we, we've got a lot of people managing right now.
Anything else about the staffing plan? Mrs. Kelly, did you have anything?
No, I did not.
All right. Okay, so, so that was discussion, it didn't need any action, correct?
No, it's, it's just, you know, giving you a little bit of insight as to the process that we've been working through and what we're identifying as needs and trying to prioritize them, you know, over a series of years. And as in the past, we will take the list for year one and not all of those positions are going to find their way into the budget presentation that we give you in, in January. Some of them are going to be set aside and we'll maybe look at them again in the next year. Some of them, we will look for grant funds, whether they're grant funds that we know we will have available, we will indicate that if we're going to, you know, sort of wait and see if there are other grant funds or other funding sources that become available. It's kind of like being in the on-deck circle. The, these positions, if money becomes available, we're, we're going to look to put these in. So, but again, it just gives you a little bit of insight into how we're looking forward over the next three to five years. And the big challenge is, for sure, going to be the FY25.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for all the time and effort you put in and getting it all together for this evening. Next we have winter sports report.
So you have the, the numbers of participants for all of our winter sports teams. And as we have done in past years, it's broken out by grade level and you also have a numbers comparison for each sport from the previous two years, just to see whether we're maintaining the same level of participation and, you know, it's nice to be able to look at this and know that we're not going to lose, you know, three-quarters of a team because they're all going to graduate. So it's, it's good data to have. I don't know if you have any specific questions I can take back to Mr. Bigelow.
I don't. Does anyone have any questions about the sports participation?
So a couple of comments. First of all, thank you whoever replaced the PDF with the XLS file. The formatting was mind-boggling to my limited ability to read, read the document, so thank you. And just a bit of editorial comment, purely from my experience as a parent, I think Mr. Bigelow is killing it. He's doing a great job. I talked to a lot of people and I have not heard a single bad word about him. He's thorough, thoughtful, seeking improvement. First year out, it's going to be difficult and, you know, there are always challenges, but he acknowledges those and is constantly seeking to improve and I'm really excited and I hope he stays in Lunenburg for a very long time.
Am I on the wrong? I'm seeing winter sports and field hockey.
Is the tab following winter?
Ah, thank you very much.
I did notice that the boys' hockey was missing the last two years, I wasn't sure about that.
He maybe doesn't have the data to access the, the hockey team, as you know, is a co-op team, so we're not a standalone team.
Yeah.
So the, the PD, the original PDF that I looked at, it said that he did not have data. There was a note somewhere in there that there was, there was a data challenge.
Okay, anybody else on that? All right, well, we thank him very much for his numbers and for his good work.
He's been a nice addition to the team.
Great. All right then, the Parks Commission requests fat, facility revenues.
Hello, Mike Cassidy, business manager again. I was approached by, via email by Anna Lockwood from Parks Commission, looking for some information on our field usage and permitting costs for our fields in the fall. There's an explanation that the Parks Commission is looking probably at a fee structure, wants to mirror it after ours. She has our data, she has our fee schedule, she was just looking for our two big uses in the fall. It's a, it's a practice in the business office that data that's requested by another in-town group, I usually present it to the school committee first for their approval, so they have the data in case they're called on the data. I, I am willing to guess that this is just going to be the, the start of an initial conversation, either between the Parks Commission and the school committee and/or myself and Ms. Lockwood. Just going back and forth, so...
Those things have happened in the past, over the last few years, correct? Around normalizing fee structures and those kinds of things?
We, we've had conversation and we've been waiting for a full complement of positions to be filled, the folks that interact. What we would like to be able to do is create a document that is available for residents to know what spaces are available for rent, in-town buildings, in school buildings or school grounds, and in our parks. And what's the fee structure? What's the process to request to schedule? You know, who's the contact person and, you know, who would be the appeal person if you had any concerns? So there's been some turnover in the rec department role, so we're, we're trying to work on that. I think, I think honestly, we will probably end up taking a stab at a draft and having people try to fill in blanks, but I think that this conversation with the Parks Commission is actually going to net some good information that would become part and parcel of that, that big-picture document that becomes available.
Everything you just described, I'm all for. I think whatever we can do to make it easier and more transparent is good.
But this does not have to do with that, who gets to bump who at the field.
No, no, no.
Oh man, that was the most complicated thing. I just could not follow that. Okay.
It's not that at all.
That's done, Tony.
They're just looking to establish a, a fee structure that is somewhat closer aligned with, with what we're doing. And honestly, the, the same challenge exists right now with spaces in-town buildings, like the gym at TCP.
Right.
There's no fee structure that's published or established for groups who want to, you know, reserve and use the gym at TCP. So the Parks Commission isn't going to be part of that, that's, you know, the folks at Town Hall.
Somebody's got to figure that out.
So there are, there are multiple entities that we're working to kind of coalesce around creation of a document, so...
So there, there is action on this for the committee, just for me to release this information to...
I move that we release the information as presented.
Second, please.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Thanks again.
Thank you. So next on the agenda are donations.
So we have a donation this evening in the amount of $1,250 from the PTO as a gift to the Turkey Hill Elementary School, and that will go in the gift account. And we also have a donation in the amount of $615 from Hannaford Helps Schools, and that is also for the Turkey Hill Elementary, and that will also be deposited into the school's gift account.
How much was the...
The first amount?
The Hannaford's one.
Oh, 615.
Oh, 15.
And then do we have one for the primary school?
I do believe that that was likely just an error, but I need to verify.
Okay, so we'll move on that one.
Because that's the exact amount. I think they may be wrote down, the primary school, when in fact it was, because this, yeah. So I'll verify.
All right.
But for now, I'm just looking for you to accept a two for the Turkey Hill.
All right. Then do we have a motion to accept these very generous gifts for Turkey Hill Elementary School?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes, and we thank them very much.
I would add if we could make sure that our appreciation is communicated.
The letters are signed by the chair.
That I do. So next would be, I see old business, but I see nothing under it.
Nothing under old business.
So that's, that's the kind of old business... So that's the kind of old business I like. It moves very quickly. Committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report this evening?
Capital planning. So capital planning has met three times, I believe, since our last meeting. Thanks, Brian.
It's a fun one, yeah.
We are nearing the end of the road in terms of coming up with the prioritization list for all of the requests that we've been deliberating over the last couple of months. We did a initial prioritization at our meeting this past Monday. Four of the five members were present and offered their first cut at priorities. One member was ill and was not able to submit their list. Relative to the request from the school committee, it currently looks as if, and I'll kind of characterize these in thirds, the doors and the cameras primarily at Turkey Hill and the primary school are definitely top third. The turf field and the truck, I would say, is middle, middle-third, bottom of the middle-third perhaps. And the window film is kind of all over the place, literally and figuratively. So that one has been a little bit more challenging sell to the committee. Mrs. Archambeau came and offered her perspective from a public comment perspective on Monday. I've continued to make the case as best I can for it, but it is what it is. And the process kind of needs to see its way through. The other thing that has come up, mostly because I've been raising the issue continuously, is that, you know, there's about $800,000 in requests from the fire department in particular relative to the ambulance and the communication system, the radio system upgrade, that are part of the ARPA request, requests that have been made to the select board. And there's also money that is available in the special purpose stabilization account that's been focused, intended to be focused on ambulances and fire trucks. So it's yet to be determined how any of, how or if any of those funds will be accessed for the ambulance and the radios. But together, that's a very substantial amount of money that if we don't access either of those potential funds is going to potentially pull from other lower priority capital requests. And that is a very high concern to me personally. And I've kept the chair and the superintendent updated on that. And again, we will see through the process. We are going, we intend to finalize the list a week from today. It will be submitted to the town manager, and she will make her cut available with her budget presentation in January, I believe. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with the report? Mr. Leighton?
Yeah, the Turkey Hill advisory met last week. Part of what we were trying to do as a school committee was to try to get feedback from the advisories on the bus issue. So we brought that up, did have some feedback from a couple of parents. There was definitely concern that it wasn't safe to walk. Safety was definitely number one. Whether it was the emphasis on sidewalks, we talked about sidewalks and funding and the issues with the town not being able to really provide sidewalks everywhere. But also crossing guards potentially increased the safety. And then that kind of transitioned into also talking about the bus, that actually the discipline of Turkey Hill was, more than 50% of it was from the bus, bus issues. So they've been working on that. They actually added an incentive program to try to decrease the amount of problems on the bus. So this is new program that they've been working on. So that's a good thing that they're actually trying to improve on that, so that was good. They're also looking into doing a presentation or an assembly. They had gotten some funds for that, so they're looking for a presenter, if anybody's interested in recommending a presenter. They were looking for recommendations. We went over the PBIS discipline data. And they also mentioned that they're planning to bring back winter activities, after-school activities in January, which, for a lot of parents, it's something new and they've never seen it before, so it's exciting for the kids and for the parents as well.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brian. Anyone else with the committee meeting?
I do.
You do?
I do, I met with the primary school on the 28th. Everything's going great over there, as usual. The kindergarten finished up a lesson on gingerbread, and first grade was doing amazing animals, where they're picking an animal and they're gonna write about it. I believe they're right in the midst of holidays around the world right now. And I know first grade just took a field trip to the Nutcracker last Friday. Second grade's hopefully setting up a field trip in the spring. Stem Night was a huge success, and the book fair was a great success also. And they had a great Veterans Day celebration. And I believe, Dr. Brennan, correct me if I'm wrong, the new assistant principal started this week?
Yes.
She did.
I thought the date's wrong, so they're excited about that. Bonniers are back in the building. We had a Thanksgiving feast. We got to participate with all the parents and help out all of that. And I think some more classrooms are having parents come in to do some one-holiday activities over the next few weeks.
All right, thank you very much. So if that is it for committee reports, we are on to public comment. If anyone has an additional public comment, do we have any public commenting?
We do not.
We do not? Anyone on the committee have anything additional to say this evening? Nothing additional? All right. Then on to topics for future discussion. The one I specifically had in mind was that we need to draft some kind of list of what we need to meet with the legislators on. And maybe, I don't know, but I would think the best thing to do would be to meet with the town manager and then invite her to meet with us, with the legislators. I think it's important to include her, but I could be swayed other way. My small list is the safety funding that was put aside by the governor that never went anywhere in the state. To do something about the crosswalks on Route 2A. I did receive a communication from the Representative Kishmerik, who said, "Well, there's this grant you can apply for for the sidewalks." Well, A, we know we can't do that because we don't have double sidewalks and bike lanes and what they need, but the other thing is, we can't do it on 2A anyways. So I don't know if he didn't understand the problem was 2A and that the local town needs help in getting that done. Or, I'm not quite sure, but he referenced a communication that I supposedly got from Senator Cronin, which I did not. So we need to come back on this. And if we can't do sidewalks, we definitely need to do something about crosswalks. I can't imagine why the state wouldn't allow us to put crosswalks at the end of, like, Whiting Street going across so kids could get across 2A and also near the primary building. Not that we expect our young children to cross there, but our parents, you know, to use the playground, to, you know, it's important. And I think it's worth a discussion. Also on that list, what can they do for us regarding mitigating the effects of S.A. going away? And I don't know what is the formal name for it, but I call it the millionaire tax, whatever that tax is. What percentage or how do we lobby to get some of those funds here? I know higher ed desperately needs it, but so do we. So those were my quick write-down this afternoon, what we needed to talk to legislators about. Did you have more?
I didn't know if we wanted to add the law. Did you have the law memorized, what chapter, section it was?
Oh, the discipline law.
Maybe revising that, or even just looking into the funding.
The funding.
Yeah, that's the funding thing.
Let's take care of these unfunded mandates and actually fund them.
Yeah, that would be nice, wouldn't it? So that's what I had for future meetings. Obviously, we won't be meeting at the end of December, and I appreciate the flexibility that superintendent showed me when I suggested that. And in January, we will see the budget once again, flexibility. I will not be at the second meeting in January, so she very nicely pushed the budget ahead. So I appreciate that. So, Brian, that one's yours. So I think we have a pretty full meeting regardless of anything else. But if somebody has something else that needs to go on there, sing out.
So just a couple of things that I just don't want to lose sight of. The busing policy, we need to revisit that at some point. And I don't know, we were waiting on data and...
We were waiting. I think we could wait.
Yeah, we haven't been getting a lot of traction on that end. However, I think the information that we can more easily get is what is the seating capacity of each of the 11 buses that we currently have, so that we can figure out what's the maximum number of students that can be transported on the secondary bus route and then the elementary bus route.
More importantly, I think we really kind of need to spell out in policy the process and the prioritization. If we're effectively, it sounds as if what we did this year, I'm paraphrasing in my own words, but we basically, the radius is there, but it's easily overcome by a request to put a kid on a bus. And we're accommodating as many as we can. And I think that that can be the bones of a new policy. But I think that we need, we also need to account for the fact that we may not have the resources that we need to do it. And therefore, there needs to be a clear process and prioritization, deadlines, all that kind of stuff. Communication plan, like, that needs to be in policy.
It is a huge...
And I think we can start with the assumption that we're going with 11 buses in perpetuity.
Oh, at this point, it's too late to order them, so.
So we need a policy regardless, so.
So we will need some form of policy about that. We needed, we've been waiting for those numbers. So, you know, once we have the numbers, if we find that we can reasonably bus everybody, then we need a policy stating that and stating timelines that parents have to abide by to make it so that we're not pulling hair out of our head.
Exactly right. And that's really what I'm kind of leading into.
And that's the big piece. But if we can't bus everyone, then we have to determine, you know, what are going to be our guidelines?
Who's in and who's not, why?
Who's in and who's out? Do we bus more of the K to five kids and less of the six to 12 kids? Do we do it by mileage? Do we, you know, we have to figure that out. And, yeah, we need to figure that out sooner rather than later, I would agree. I don't know if there's time for that at that, or time to prep for that at that January meeting, probably not. But maybe the second week in January, when I'm not here. The information could be presented, and then we could go into a further discussion on it the following week, if that is a timeline. I don't mind standing there and counting which bus has how many kids on it.
It's not gonna be, this is not gonna be an easy plane to land.
No.
And it's probably gonna be a multiple-meeting kind of discussion.
Oh, it most definitely is.
Therefore, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
You know, because parents need this information.
Well, they need as much time as possible, and we need the time to figure out what is the best thing to do. And I have no intention of having what happened last summer happen again. Maybe I can't do anything about it, I don't know, but we're gonna try.
And then the only other...
And to the point of communication, I think that that's something that needs to be communicated when the information is requested this year, that deadlines will be adhered to. And the challenge for us becomes, you can literally have someone live across the street from the school, and it's a dangerous situation for their child to walk across the street to the school. So the mileage parameter...
Isn't helpful.
The safety debate happens regardless of the mileage.
And we walked it, and we know.
Yep.
That was not a safe place to walk.
Right.
You know, we had the police officer with us, and he was directing traffic so we could walk.
I think that deliberately going through this process with the lessons that we learned from last year will be very helpful, number one, because we're having the discussion. It'll find its way into social media and PTO meetings and who knows what else. But the other thing is, is that with a policy that sets, this is when we need the information, this is when you can expect to get a response back, here's the criteria we're gonna use, like, now you have a leg to stand on, which you really didn't have last year because you had a mile and a half radius, and we weren't living by that. So it all became very subjective after that, and we need to reduce the subjectivity.
Right, absolutely. Thank you very much.
And then when we do have something, not only should it go out on the request, it should go out as soon as we have something. It needs to go out, bullfaced with dancing glitter and all kinds of stuff so that people will read it. Put it on the sign, as the sign in the center of town. Check your email, new busing regulation. I mean, we're gonna have to really push.
Well, potentially, if you landed somewhere that mileage was still a factor and people would not be eligible, we could figure out, based on our current enrollment, which kiddos fall in that zone, and we could mail something home in addition to the robocall, in addition to the email, in addition to potentially a flyer that goes in the backpack.
All part of the plan, yep.
Yeah.
So that is a topic that needs to come back.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
No, ready to go.
He's ready, he's ready.
I had a couple more, but I'll save them.
It's three hours and 10 minutes. That's over the two and a half, but we've done worse. So I would entertain a, first off, say Merry Christmas to everybody. And then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:39 PM.
I'll second.
And we need a roll call vote there.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes, thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, all. Happy holidays.